Alright, you guys ready? Ready? Alright. I now call to order the August twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three special meeting of the Wellington Board of Trustees. Time being six-thirty P M. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, welcome everybody. If you didn't see it when you came in, that table over there with refreshments and snacks, that's free game. So go ahead and have at that if you would like. Before we continue, I'd like to acknowledge that this is a special meeting to consider an appeal of the June fifth, twenty-twenty-three Planning Commission decision. It is different from most of our usual processes. We are fortunate that appeals are not a regular occurrence. And additionally, I would like to acknowledge that this meeting has been carefully planned and publicly noticed to ensure transparency, transparency and compliance with all applicable laws. This has been done to preserve this board's capacity to act in a quasi-judicial judicial manner and to protect the due process rights of all involved parties. Tonight, the board will consider the appeal brought to brought by the residents to the town based on the record of the Planning Commission's decision. Based on the arguments raised by the parties and the record, the Board of Trustees will determine if the Planning Commission erred in its decision-making. Through this process, I would like to establish just some ground rules for everybody, expectations and standards. For the decorum of the proceedings this evening. So first of all, I would like or I expect everyone to treat others around you with dignity dignity, respect and civility despite any differences in opinion. Secondly, I would like or I would expect everyone to exhibit respect towards the institution and the community that this board serves, which is the town and all of you and the residents people watching. Third, I expect everyone to exhibit respect for the established procedures that ensure due process, civility and decorum in these proceedings. Fourth, please note that any appropriate inappropriate noise, signs or other displays or other distractions are not permitted this evening. Any such action by an individual that distracts from or interrupts these proceedings will result in one single verbal warning that will be followed by a meeting recess and or the removal of said individual from the building. The board cannot consider additional public comment in its determination on the appeal, given that we must base our decision only and purely on the record, which does include hours of public comment before the planning commission. Thank you, everybody, for your cooperation. Mister Clerk, may I get a roll call, please?
Trustee Gator.
Here.
Trustee Daly.
Present.
Trustee Mason.
Here.
Trustee Teets.
Here.
Trustee Wigan.
Here.
Mayor Pretten McDonald.
Here.
Mayor Shosse.
Here.
Thank you. We have a quorum.
Are there any amendments to the agenda this evening? No. Are there any conflicts of interest with the agenda this evening? No. Alright, and typically we allow public comment for any non-agenda items. So this would be the time for any non-agenda item, public comments. Obviously, anything speaking to the Planning Commission decision cannot be heard, and I will go ahead and read this so everybody understands. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes. Please know that if any person desires to make a statement regarding the Planning Commission decision on June fifth, twenty-twenty-three site plan approval, that this board cannot consider your comments at this time. There's an appeal hearing scheduled for this evening and will require the Board of Trustees to act in a quasi-judicial role as it considers the Planning Commission's decision for the June fifth, twenty-twenty-three site plan. To ensure that all parties' due process rights are protected, we will not permit any public comment related to that meeting or decision at this time. There's an established process. We need to abide by the law when the time comes to consider the appeal. We cannot take comments on that topic into account, so please help us get through this evening with and this meeting without any issue. No public comment. Mister Clerk, will you please read the title of the action item?
Item C-one Connel Asphalt Plant Appeal, excuse me, Connel Asphalt Plant Appeal.
Mister Sapienza, Tom Attorney, will present this item to the board. Mister Sapienza.
Good evening, members of the board, Mister Mayor. My name's Dan Sapienza with March Alden Sapienza with the Town Attorney. As you know, this evening, we'll be hearing an appeal of a planning commission decision from June fifth. Want to introduce the parties, Ben and Ayla Listakow here, represented by Jeff Colors with Herms and Colors and the Appelise Connel Resources. I think John Warren is here, the President of Connel Resources, and they're represented by Carolyn White of Brownstein Hyatt Harbor Shrek. With any quasi-judicial hearing, which we don't do a whole lot of in front of the Board of Trustees, but certainly last night, there was one. With any quasi-judicial hearing, we need to start with announcing any or disclosing any conflicts of interest. And so you know, you did that at the beginning of the meeting. Now would be the opportunity in this process to disclose any conflicts of interest. Is there any?
I do have, um, not as far as conflicts of interest, but ex parte.
We'll get, we'll get that just one, one step at a time. No conflicts of interest with this item? Okay. I mean, now disclosure of any ex parte communications you may have had. Trustee Teets?
Yes, just multiple emails when this plan came before Board of Adjustments. We received a lot of emails asking what do we do if they go ahead and approve? The Connel Asphalt Plant made recommendations to everyone that reached out that there is an appeals process and to contact the town if they wanted more information on the appeals process. Just mainly the trustee emails that have come to us on a regular basis since this process started. As soon as it transitioned to Planning Commission, then the typical response is I cannot respond to this item as we will be hearing it in front of an appeal if it does end up going that way. So I also did have a resident reach out to me and stress their concern over watching a trustee watch a public streaming of the Planning Commission meeting while it was happening. Other than that, I am aware that we had full access now as soon as that appeal was filed and transitioned over to us trustees. Other than that, I don't have anything else.
Yeah, and I will go ahead and say I was that trustee that happened to watch the Planning Commission meeting that evening. I don't think it's anything that any of us haven't been able to review at this point as well as certainly that was well before the appeal was filed. So I'm not sure that there's anything real crazy there. I will also say just in regards to the rest of the board members, obviously, you know, posts on Let's Talk Wellington and that sort of thing, I think a lot of us have probably seen some of those. So just wanted to throw that out there as well, but I don't know that that would have anything to do with our decision-making process tonight.
So I'd say just a conversation similar to my colleagues have shared, people have talked about things, but it's all been things that I've said and talked about it and nothing outside of what is in the packet. Everything that was in the packet is everything that I've heard and just come across in port, but I don't think that will cause any problems with my ability to hear impartially on this.
So to lay out kind of how tonight's going to proceed. A little different than other quasi-judicial hearings or quasi-judicial issues brought before the board. As it's appeal, it is an appeal, and as the mayor said, this is not a common occurrence here in the town of Wellington. We'll start out with an opportunity for preliminary procedural issues that might need to be raised by the parties. Don't know. It's up to them if they want to raise, raise some issue. Then we'll have an introduction by me. We will, I will do brief introduction regarding process procedure, kind of this very generally. Then the appellant will speak or the representation for the appellant, and we've, they've asked for thirty minutes. An opportunity for thirty minutes to speak, and so we thought that was reasonable considering the magnitude of this. There will be PowerPoint presentation and those slides are also available. We've made sure they're printed for you, so you don't have to turn around and see them. After the appellant gives a presentation, the Appelie Connel Resources can give a thirty-minute response. Following that, the appellants can give a rebuttal. And I apologize, I'm using appellants and appelies. It might be easier. I'll probably try and say Connel Resources who's the Appelie, the appellants are the least cows. We have applicants, appellants, appelies, all sorts of terms, so maybe we want to keep them straight. So the least cows will be given an opportunity to rebut the Connel Resources' response. I'll give a very brief statement and then we'll be opportunity for the board to deliberate and ask questions of the parties as needed. We do ask that you hold questions until that time. Let the presentations complete, and then once you get to deliberations, if there's something that hasn't been answered, you can ask for clarification on points that are raised. So at this time, it's staged for preliminary procedural issues. Do, do either parties have issues to raise?
Mayor, Council, Town Staff and Members of the Public, my name is Carolyn White. I represent the Connel Resources Group, the Appelies. And I do have one preliminary matter that I feel the need to bring to your attention. It kind of is along the lines of the conversation that was just held where the mayor spoke about the nature of this proceeding and the need to consider only that evidence which is in the record. And you all disclosed ex parte communications. My client brought to my attention that yesterday morning, this flyer was delivered to a number of residences within the town of Wellington, exhorting people to engage in ex parte communications by contacting you and sending you emails and also asserting various facts about the matter at issue. And I just wanted to raise this, mention it. I want to provide this to the clerk. And I'd like to ask the appellants to state on the record whether or not they had anything to do with this or whether this came from somewhere else. And then also just, of course, exhort you all that if that did happen and you got this flyer or any other contacts that as a result of this flyer that, as you all just discussed, I know you're well aware that that information is not appropriate to be considered tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the board on that issue?
Any on the board receive a flyer? No.
I have not seen that particular flyer, but I did see a flyer prior to that flyer. I don't know if that. There's been more than one flyer. I just want to make that clear.
Do you have any questions to the parties on that? Ask any questions by the party?
Guess we could ask.
Did you guys have anything to do with the flyer that was handed out yesterday?
Yeah, we're trying to get people to the meeting, right?
If you could approach the podium and speak in the microphone, please.
Yeah, my name is Ben Listaco. Yes, we. Oh. You'll be alright. It is, has not been, yeah. Been a fight since fifth grade on that. Yes, we, we are, we are part of that, that flyer and that, that Take Action Wellington group. We are trying to get people to this. We want you to know that this is a, a public issue and, and that there, and we're not pushing people one way or the other on that. I, I think there is our, our opinion a little bit on that, but we want them to show up and, and be a part of our community.
Thank you very much. Yeah.
Every member of the town does have a constitutional right to approach you all and tell you how they feel about this. That's not part of the record, and I agree, it's not necessarily proper for you to consider what they have to say. So I just want to add that little bit of gloss on what, what happened.
Thank you. Anything further questions from the board?
Any else? Questions? No. Please proceed.
Listaco, Sapienza is my last name, so I, you know. Just want to be real clear. I'm saying it wrong this whole time, so. So now I'll just give a very, I'm going to say a brief introduction. That's not necessarily my foredate being brief, but I'm going to try and run through the appeals process, kind of what brought us here and what the board should be looking at without delving into any of the arguments of the parties. They'll be able to present their, their positions very well. I want to represent.
Sapienza, I'm sorry, they're having trouble hearing in the back, so can you get a little bit closer to the mic or speak a little bit louder?
Louder. I will try to speak louder and slower.
Thank you so much.
Speaking is, is usually what I do in these situations. I do apologize. I'll try and give a, a somewhat brief introduction here. Appeals are not common in the town of Wellington. In fact, my office has represented this town for decades. And in, in our research, we've not found any indication that there's ever been an appeal of, of a planning commission decision to the Board of Trustees. That's not to say it's an improper process. It's definitely, it's been part of the town's process. It's an important part, making sure that everybody's due process rights are upheld. It's just unusual. So as we delve into this, I, I wanted to make sure that I can kind of go through all the steps. And so if it seems like I'm repeating things that have been said multiple times in your packet, that's why. Want to make sure everybody's clear on, on the process and what we're doing here. This is a process to determine that if a, if, whether a previous decision was in error. It must be based on the written appeal itself pursuant to our land use code. And with the supporting presentations that you'll hear tonight, having read those arguments, now you'll hear the presentations, you'll deliberate and you'll make a decision. And this decision you'll make can be one of three things. The board can affirm the decision below. The board can modify the decision below, or the board can reverse the decision below. That comes from our land use code and specifically regarding appeals for site plans. What the board may not do, I think is important to remember. In the board's role today in reviewing this or hearing this appeal of a planning commission decision, the board cannot exceed the authority granted to the planning commission itself. So if the planning commission couldn't have done it, it can't be done today through a modification or otherwise. When you're hearing an appeal, there are standards for consideration and required findings. These are available in your packet and a, and a guideline that I put together. It's on package pages seven and eight. These come straight from the land use code. And I know the, the parties will be discussing these as well. On an appeal in reviewing and reviewing and determining whether to affirm, modify or reverse, you must consider, A, what, one, whether the decision of the planning commission was a, was a clear error as opposed to fairly debatable according to the provision of the land use code. Consider the interpretation instructions of land use code, the purpose, intent and design objectives of any standards that are subject to this appeal, the record on the application, including official plans and policies of the town used to evaluate the application, whether the final decisions and the grounds for relief requested are within the authority granted by the land use code, and whether there are other more appropriate and applicable procedures to achieve the applicant's proposed objectives such as a plan amendment, text amendment, planned zoning district or a zoning MAC amendment for variance. So those are important findings. And like I said, you'll find those on page seven and eight of the packet. And we can, if you have any questions, you want me to repeat those at any time or any of us, please let me know. Those are important. That's what you must consider on an appeal. When reviewing the, whether the decision of the planning commission on the site plan was appropriate, you also use the site plan review criteria. These come from the land use code, and these are that the site plan is consistent with the comprehensive plan and the intent stated in the land use code. The lot size and lot dimensions, dimensions are consistent with what is shown in the approved final plot. That no buildings or structures infringe on any easements. The proposed site grading is consistent with the requirements of any applicable adopted storm drainage criteria or master drainage plans. The density and dimensions shown conform with Article four of the land use code and the applicable development standards have been adequately addressed and the proposed improvements conform with Article five of the land use code. Again, all of those are available on pages seven and eight of the packet. The record, your packet tonight was probably the largest we've ever published at over two thousand pages, and I do apologize for that. In an effort to make that two thousand, those two thousand pages easy to navigate and easy to use, we managed to muddle it up entirely. I've noticed that there are a number of pages that have overlapping page numbers and other things. So tonight, as we're referring to the record, it's, I think it would be appropriate if the board members refer to a page, give us a couple of minutes to make sure that everybody's on the same page. There are two thousand pages here, so want to make sure if you're referencing any specific section to cite that and make sure that everybody knows where you're looking. Because I think any page, there could be as many as three-page numbers or four-page numbers. We also were unable to keep our bookmarks, which could have made it even easier to navigate. So again, I do apologize about that. The decision that's under review today is the June fifth, twenty-twenty-three approval of the Connel Resources Asphalt Plant Site Plan by the Planning Commission. That site plant was, site plan was approved with conditions. These are on page fifty-eight of your packet. Now use the Bates stamp number at the bottom for the, the, the record of C R T O W zero, 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 eight. Satisfaction that the, the conditions that the planning commission approved are satisfaction of the conditions of approval of the Board of Adjustment variance granted on October twenty-seventh. Addressing all staff report comments, final engineering plans accepted by the town engineer and obtain and provide evidence of satisfaction of all county, state, federal permits, including but not limited to air quality, storm, water discharge, process water discharge, fugitive dust, operations plan, noise ordinance, county odors, fuel storage, and then satisfaction of all referral agency comments. That was the conditions of, of the approval of the site plan. This site is south of East County Road sixty-six. It's west of Burlington Northern Railroad Crossing. This property was annexed in two thousand as part of the Lebsack's Farm Annexation Number Three. And during the time of its annexation until currently, it's been zoned high industrial. The Board of Adjustments, this because this property is adjacent to a residential district, this, it was taken first to the Board of Adjustments where the applicants requested a variance on the setbacks. The land use code requires that any heavy industrial use be setback for residential, residential district, one thousand feet. And the Board of Adjustments in October twenty, twenty-two granted variance allowing the use setback standard to be reduced to eight hundred feet from the property line to the heavy industrial operations. There is also a height variance allowing one silo structure to a maximum height of seventy feet instead of the normal forty-five foot high requirement. The site plan review began in March sixth, twenty-twenty-three with the Planning Commission hearing. The transcript of that is not available in the packet. I believe we only have the transcript for the June fifth hearing. However, the video is available, was available in the packet as well as all of the packet materials. At March sixth, there was a presentation by the applicant, approximately three hours of public comment. A number of written comments were included in the packet. The Planning Commission continued the hearing to allow more time to review public comment as there was considerable amount of it, and request additional information on air dispersion module, air dispersion modeling, emission standards, traffic, noise, health and environmental concerns, water impacts and architectural character. That meeting was continued to May first. On May first, Connel Resources requested an additional continuation to gather the requested information for the commission. However, in the packet for May first, there were approximately two hundred pages, two hundred fifty pages of written comments submitted there. And the meeting was continued to June fifth. Connel provided additional information requested by the board. There was approximately two hours of public comment. The transcript of that entire hearing is available in the, in the record in the packet. There are approximately three hundred pages of written comments and the planning commission approved the site plan at that time. This appeal was filed within seven days as required by our land use code. It was timely. And it was originally scheduled to July twenty-fifth. At that time, we did, the board did continue that hearing and we do appreciate that to make sure that we complied with all notice requirements of our land use code. This meeting is a special meeting of the Board of Trustees. It's also a public hearing under our land use codes. There are a lot of different notice requirements that we want to make sure we covered. And so those all went out as, as required. The proud parties are now, will now give their presentations. They'll be limited to thirty minutes with an opportunity for rebuttal at the end by the Listacos. Thank you very much. Thank you. Give me one second, Jeff. We'll get the slides for any.
Mister Clerk.
Yes, Mayor Shosse.
Would you be able to set a thirty-minute timer?
Certainly.
As soon as he starts?
I will.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the Board of Town, Board of the Trustees of the Town of Wellington. My name is Jeff Colors and I'm an attorney in Fort Collins, and I'll be presenting the appeal on behalf of the appellants, Ayla and Ben Listaco. Got that right? So let's go on to the next slide. Yeah, I'm going to have my technical support crew advance my slides for me. There's not that many, so. So this is a brief presentation outline. I don't, I'm going to look at the criteria for approval again, but Dan already went through that. And I'm going to go through our substantive appeal issues and wrap up. So let's go on to the next slide. So again, this is the back one. So this is the criteria for, that, that was before the Planning Commission, when the Planning Commission considered this matter. And we're going to focus on the last one, which is the applicable development standards, and that's number F or number six. And that's where all the, that's where all the setback issues, I believe, that we've raised come into play. So next slide. So the first appeal issue is, is the toxic chemicals setback, and this was talked about a fair amount at the Planning Commission. The setbacks have been treated by staff again as part of meeting criteria F. And this is, this is the code section basically says if there's a heavy industrial use producing and curating toxic chemicals or conducting animal slaughtering shall be located at least two thousand six hundred and forty feet from any residential district. So in this case, there's no question that there's heavy industrial use. So we've got that part of the, the setback requirement met or the setback applicability met. The question is whether the second part, which is producing and curating toxic chemicals is met. Does this setback apply? I mean, if it does, then that means the entire site, site is within the setback. So let's, so, so I think the, the language here is a bit hard to understand. And it's, it's not the clearest. The question is, will the asphalt plant be producing and, and curating toxic chemicals? And I, and I would submit that this setback, this phrase is not meant to be taken like literally in its most narrow sense because that basically sounds like it only applies to a chemical plant that mixes and creates chemicals. So that would be a very, I mean, how many of those are there out there? That'd be a very, very narrow applicability. And another issue I'd like to bring up is this setback, this, this phrase could apply to the process of the, of the industrial activity or the finished product of the industrial activity, or maybe both. Now, I don't think it makes sense to limit the applicability, applicability to just the, the finished product because this would not serve the apparent goal of setbacks like this. The purpose of a setback like this is to insulate the non-compatible use, which is the residential dis- district from the heavy industrial use. So it has to, it has to serve this purpose. It must concern the produce, the toxic chemicals that are released into the environment and not just the finished product. Now I'm going to look, now I'm going to go back to the rest of the setback language to help make the case that this applies to toxic chemicals that are released into the environment. The rest of the setback language says it include, it has the phrase animal slaughtering. Now the reason you might want a setback from animal slaughtering operations is not because the finished product is something toxic. I mean, that's going to be food for humans or for animals. And if there's a rendering plant next door or on the site, then the, then the products are going to be things like grease and tallow, bone meal. Those are things that are, you know, maybe kind of gross, but they're not inherently dangerous or toxic. So for the reason that we have the, the reason that this setback might apply to an animal slaughtering operation is not because of the finished product. It's because of the smell. So oftentimes, the animal slaughtering has that rendering plant, and that's, that's what really smells. I've never smelled it, but that's my understanding. And that's what it exists in Greeley. There's a very large beef slaughter plant. In Greeley with a rendering plant operated by J B S, that plant has an air emissions permit. So I think the setback was admit, was written to include something like that. So if you read the setback language as a whole, considering the purpose of it, you've got to agree with me that this has something to do with chemicals that are released into the air and not just the finished product. And if you agree with me, then the only question is whether the things that get emitted into the air from the asphalt plant are toxic. And that's, that's an easy question. The answer is yes. The board, the town board members, you guys don't have to do your own investigation to decide whether what's coming out of the asphalt plant, some smoke sack is toxic or whether the, the, the levels are, are safe or are not safe. The EPA in the state of Colorado has done that work for you. There's no question, it's clear in the There's no question, it's clear in the record that hot mix asphalt plants produce particulate matter. They produce what the EP refers to as, EPA refers to as criteria air plants. And those are the, those are the, um, criteria air pollutants are pollutants that the EPA has set like ambient air quality standards for. And then there's also a number of what are called hazardous air pollutants, HAPs or HAPS. That is quite clear that the plant emits these things from all the studies in the record regarding, you know, this very issue. So let's go on to the next slide. Next slide. So this is a chart from Connell's revised air modeling report, and it shows the hazardous air pollutants that are expected to be emitted from the plant. And this is for, for purposes of the modeling report. And if you look at the top four, there's permit limits that are gonna be, that are gonna exist for tho, for those specific, um, chemicals, which I'm not gonna try to pronounce, uh, but they're up there. Now, emissions of these hazardous air pollutants are regulated because, well, they're hazardous. They're known to cause health impacts. They're referred to the, in the, they're referred to in the industry as air toxics. Now, the Connell's, um, emissions report also has a similar chart for the volatile organic chemicals and the, um, and the criteria pollutants, but I'm not gonna include those because what we're worried about is the toxic chemicals. Those are the HAPS, and the HAPs, these are them. And they're regulated because they're toxic. Connell's attorneys summarize the various air quality regulations that are gonna apply to this plant. They include limits on emissions, requirements on specific emissions reduction technologies, ex, um, inspections, and then they're gonna be subject to the, the new source performance standards that apply specifically to hotness mix asphalt plant. So there's a whole EPA set of standards, um, that apply to this very plant. So I don't think this is a hard call. I mean, the asphalt plant is going to reduce, release harmful chemicals into the air that are beyond negligible. That's why they have, that's why they're gonna have to have an air quality permit. And in my mind, it doesn't matter whether Connell applies for their, complies with their permit. I mean, I'm sure they will. But I don't think that matters. I don't think it matters whether anybody in this room thinks that the permit, you know, levels that, that they can emit are, you know, quote unquote, safe enough. Connell's defense here, that they're relying on that as a, as a counterargument that, well, you know, they're subject to this permitting regime. And so their missions are gotta be within safe levels as determined by the state and the EPA. I don't think this is a defense. I mean, the setback language, which we're stuck with it, it doesn't make this, it doesn't make this, um, distinction. If Connell's position was correct, then the setback would actually be gutted because pretty much every industrial process that emits air pollution in potentially harmful quantities is gonna have an air quality permit, right? JBS's meat plant in Greeley has air permits. Oil and gas well pads have air permits. So Connell saying the setback, setback doesn't apply because the air emissions are heavily regulated. That's their position. I think if you flip that around, then you have the truth. The setback applies precisely because there's this emissions regime that applies. I would note that under the land use code, compliance with air quality emissions permits is a separate requirement. So all the more reason that that's not a reason to decide, the fact that there's this permitting regime exists does not mean that the setback doesn't apply. Now, you may say, well, that setback is burdensome or needs some fine tuning. And I don't know if that's true, but it says what it says and we're stuck with it. It clearly applies. It's clearly not met in this case. So the board should have no trouble rejecting the site plan or overturning the planning commission on this basis. Next slide, please. So this is from the, uh, this is from Connell's, uh, traffic plan, which is in the record. And it just shows, um, you know, how far that twenty-six hundred feet goes. It includes about half of the Sundance, um, Sundance subdivision. So I'm gonna go on to the next, uh, setback issue that's in our appeal, and that is the, the light industrial setback. So this one, this, this is again out of the code. There is a setback that applies to industrial and, like, light industrial and manufacturing two hundred and fifty feet from any residential district or use. As I'm so sure you all know, on the west side of the, of the site is a, a residential district. Next slide, please. So here's part of the code's very long de, definition on what constitutes light industrial and manufacturing use or light industrial and manufacturing. And I would note that it's not just light and manufacturing, it's light industrial, light manufacturing and industrial. I think that's two different things potentially. So I'm not gonna read that because it's, it's up there and you guys are smart. You can read it. I'm gonna go up, go, go past, um, let's go to the next slide and, um, let's go one further. So this comes out of, um, si, page four forty-nine, which is the, of the record, which is the site plan. And this is a quadrant that I created that shows what's within two hundred and fifty feet of the western border of the, of the, um, property. And it shows that there is, if you look, I mean, gotta look carefully, but there's, there's fuel pumps, there's a truck washing station. I understand that might be scrapped by now, but, um, there's also the truck staging area, welding and mechanical shop, storage area, and then roadways along the western side. And then that's also the main entrance right there on the western side. So next slide, please. So here's the southwest quadrant and it shows something similar. No, I might have already gone through these, but, um, there's the, uh, there's the welding, mechanical shop, storage, um. It's pretty well labeled, so. Now, in my view, this is, this is a light industrial use. There's gonna be heavy truck traffic, according to the traffic study, seventy-two tricks, trips a day carrying raw materials and finished product out. Uh, and all this is gonna go along the west side, at least through the main entrance, which is within the two hundred and fifty feet. The seventy-two truck trips a day does not include all the truck activity that's gonna go on the site, which is gonna be driving around, idling, being staged, being washed, being loaded. I mean, this site's gonna be a, a truck paradise and it's gonna be concentrated on the north east, probably the northwest part of the con, of the site, because that's where the trucks are gonna come in and out. There's also the welding and mechanical shop there presumably to fabricate repairs and maintenance for the trucks and the plant itself. They're gonna be building things, fixing things. That sounds like a light industrial use. There's gonna be storage of, onsite storage of materials, which is specifically included in the light industrial definition. That's gonna be, that's the part on the bottom, um, like the south, west, southwest quadrant. There's also the definition of, um, light industrial also includes handling of raw materials. And that's clearly gonna occur, um, being trucked in and out of the site through the west side of the site. This setback is clearly not met, so again, the, um, the Planning Commission aired in approving the, the, um, site plan with this problem. I'll also mention one other minor setback violation. Uh, if you look on that slide up there, there's these, the, the storage area is also subject to a hundred-foot su, setback from, um, property lines for residential property. And that's encroaching a little bit as well. It's obviously, it's pretty minor, but I just wanna bring it up to show that there is definitely a, a pattern of these kinds of problems. Uh, let's go to the next slide. So this is the eight hundred-foot setback issue that, um, Dan mentioned where Connell Resources did get a variance from the Planning Commission to take this from a thousand feet to eight hundred feet. So this slide shows the red line is eight hundred feet from the western border. And you can see that there's still some, some components that are connected to the plant, uh, within the eight hundred feet. Uh, I believe Connell's response is that, well, those are movable components. Their conveyor belts, their bins, piles of aggregate, uh, so it's okay if they're within the eight hundred feet. I don't know if that really matters. I mean, they're moving around. That's gonna be a really intense use in that area. Still sounds like a heavy industrial activity. And you know, the, the operation, or actually, my understanding is when the plant's in actually an operation, you've got, you know, piles of aggregate being, uh, moved with conveyor belts. It's all one continuous operation. It's all physically connected. So just, so the, yes, the most intense part is gonna be, you know, the actual like plant, the actual place where the, where the materials come together and get mixed. But that doesn't mean that the rest of the operation is not, um, heavy industrial as well. So for, this is our, this is a, another reason why the Planning Commission aired in proving this, um, this proposal. I mean, it's, it's clearly within the eight hundred-foot setback. Next slide, please. How am I doing on time?
Thirteen and a half minutes, roughly.
Thirteen? So I'm gonna go on to the next, um, way in which the Planning Commission aired, and this is the lack of elevation. So, um, the code is quite clear that, um, dimensioned elevation drawings and renderings have to be included in your site plan. And the reason for this, and the code actually says this, is to make sure that the, the buildings that are gonna go up meet some of, you know, meet the pretty basic requirements. These are requirements like for a giant building, you wanna break up that pattern, that giant wall with some different materials or for elevations. Then those are, those are the requirements that are in section five dot zero nine dot two dot B. Yeah, and through F. You know, that was a mouthful. But the point is that there's elevation, the, that the applicant has to provide elevations for each and every building, each side of the building, so that these requirements, so we can see if the Planning Commission can see if the substantive requirements are met. Connell's submissions, submissions clearly don't apply. And if you look at pages four forty-one, four forty-two, four four, four seventy-seven through eighty-seven, that is, those are the materials, I mean, that's in the record. Those are the materials that Connell, um, submitted that, you know, and in an attempt to comply with this requirement. But they're, they're not actually elevations of any specific thing. There are some, um, there are example drawings, there's some photographs of, here's what our, you know, our metal building is gonna look like. Some examples of the materials they're gonna use, but there's not, there, there's not actually any elevations, not even of the, the concrete batch plant itself. I think Connell would say in their defense, well, staff allowed Con, Connell to defer doing this until after site plan review. I mean, unfortunately, that's, in my view, that, that's not a defense. I mean, the city staff can't decide just kind of on a, you know, with all respect to them, not trying to personally insult them, but they cannot decide that certain provisions of the code don't apply or can be complied with later. It was error for the staff to do that, and it's, it was error for the Planning Commission to allow that to get by them. And it would be error for the Board of Trustees to do the same. Again, I wanna point out that, you know, just providing elevations is not just so that the staff can check a box. It's so that they can make sure that the substantive requirements of the, of the, um, of the code are met. So, and right now, there's no way we can tell whether the substantive requirements of the code are gonna be met that apply at the site plan review stage. So this is another reason why, um, the Planning Commission was aired in approving the plans, approving, approving the site plan. Now, I think that, um, I believe Connell will probably suggest that, well, some of these issues can be fixed right now at this stage by having the Board of Trustees approve the site plan with, you know, with conditions, maybe to fix the problem with the two hundred and fifty-foot setback or the one hundred-foot setback that applies to contractor storage areas. And I would submit that, you know, that, that's not the right outcome. That might fix those fairly minor issues, uh, that I still bring up just to show that there's a pattern, uh, here. But the, the lack of elevations is not gonna get fixed by that. And that, I mean, you, you, it, it would be improper to, to approve the site plan with that kind of condition because that's like waiving a, a part of the code. It's also not gonna fix the issue with the toxic chemical setback. The only way to fix that is with the variance, maybe, um, and Board of Trustees can't do that today. That's not within your power. And again, I mean, approving with conditions kinda seems like forcing a round peg into a square hole here, here. I mean, the, the property is zoned, heavy industrial is right next to a residential zone. And normally, for, um, a com, a, a zoning configuration like this, and I'm kinda looking at the town zoning map here, and you'd have a, like a transition zone, like a light, you'd have your, your residential zone and maybe like a commercial or an office park, and then you'd have your industrial. And we don't have that here. Um, so really, the only way to, that a heavy industrial use is ever gonna happen on this property is to grant variances. Um, and, and that's kind of a self-inflicted problem that the town has. And that might be why nothing's been built on, no industrial use has been built here for twenty years, even though it's been zoned like that twenty years. So the solution is to maybe reevaluate the zoning of the property and decide if, revisit whether attracting heavy industrial use is really realistic here. Next slide? Okay. So I'm getting close to wrapping up here. And, uh, Dan did go through, these are what I view as like additional matters that the Board of Trustees needs to consider tonight beyond just the, you know, substantive criteria that were before the Planning Commission. And some of these, I don't know that they're really relevant, uh, but I am gonna hit a few of these. And so the first one is whether the Planning Commission decision was a clear error or if whether it was fairly debatable. In my view, there is pretty clear error. I mean, this, these errors were not things that were like judgment calls. I mean, the ultimate judgment call in land use planning as well, is this, you know, consistent with the comprehensive plan? That's really wishy-washy. This is not wishy-washy. I mean, the failure to have elevations for all the, all the buildings, that's code requirement wasn't met, that's pretty clear. The, the plant clearly emits what the, you know, EPA describes in the industry as air toxics in amounts sufficient to trigger permitting. That's not negligible. In my view, this, the, that means that the setback, the twenty-six, two thousand six hundred and forty-foot setback clearly applies. And, you know, the other setbacks, I mean, they're minor, but I think it's, I mean, they're either over the line. If you agree that, you know, the, the, the stuff on the west side of the property is a, is light industrial, and it's over that two hundred and fifty-foot line, that's pretty clear. It's not, um, a judgment call in my view. So now I'll go on to the next, um, the next one of these, uh, matter, additional matters to consider. And that is the purpose, intent, and design objectives, um, that, of the, that we're talking about. And I think the, the main, uh, code provisions that we're talking about are the, the setbacks. Why do setbacks exist? I mean, I've already hit this once and I'll hit it again. Setbacks exist to protect the, you know, incompatible use from the, um, you know, the environmental and nuisance issues that come up with the, with the industrial use. I mean, that, that's the purpose of the setbacks. And they should be construed in favor to advance that purpose. They should be, uh, construed to, to maximize the amount of protection for the protected use. That's their purpose. And especially with the toxic chemical setback, um, you know, the language there is not entirely clear. I, I agree. But in that case, the town does have, the town does have a fair bit of discretion, uh, to decide what that means. And that the law is clear about that. The next issue I'll hit, hit is number five, whether the, the final decision, the grounds for relief requested an appeal are within the authority granted by the regulations. We're asking that the, um, that the town trustees, you know, deny the, reject the site plan. And that's clearly something that was within the Planning Commission's jurisdiction. So I think that, that issue is clearly met in this case. The last one that I wanna talk about a little bit. The last one that I want to talk about a little bit more, and then I'm going to wrap up. And that is whether there are other more appropriate and applicable procedures. And I think this factor reverse fa- favors reversal on the toxic chemical setback, which I'm going to come back to briefly. And if you agree with me that the setback applies, uh the only option is to hold Connell resources to it. And that would be rejecting the site plan on that basis. If Connell wants to proceed on, they'll have to get, they'll have to go for variance in front of the Board of Adjustment again. And that's where Connell can make the case that, you know, that twenty-six, two that twenty-six hundred foot setback is just overkill. Or um, you know, the plant's not really, the emissions aren't really all that bad. Um so you don't really need that twenty-six hundred square foot setback.
Mr. Colors, you have three minutes remaining.
Thank you. That's where all of Connell's air modeling would be relevant. That's where it comes in. Granting or denying that variance is going to be, would be a tough decision. Um I wouldn't want to be the one making that decision, but um that's not our decision today. Today, I think the decision is pretty easy, and that is whether the variance applies, or not the variance, whether that setback applies. That's a yes or no question. The answer is yes. So the board, the trustees should reverse the planning commission. Find that that toxic chemical setback applies here, and I ask that you reverse on that specific basis. That will ensure that Connell will have to go through that variance procedure if it wants to proceed. I think that's fair. I also asked the town, the trustees to uh reject the site plan on the basis that there's failure to submit elevations. That is crystal clear. And if reversal is going to happen on one of those bases, you might as well reverse on those other minor bases that I also went through. The eight hundred setback foot setback problem, the two hundred and fifty foot light industrial setback problem, and even maybe that hundred foot uh contractor storage area problem. This would send a message to both the town and Connell that you're serious about enforcing that land use code. That's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Please refrain from clapping. You clap longer after the gavel. I will have a warning. We will have a recess, and you will have the possibility of being removed.
You want this?
Yeah.
Please refrain from talking.
Thank you.
Would you also give me a ten minute and a three minute? Thank you.
Certainly.
Good evening, Mayor, Board of Trustees, Town Staff, members of the public. As mentioned before, I'm Carolyn White. I'm here on behalf of Connell Resources, the appellee in this matter. Um with me tonight is John Warren, President of Connell Resources, and Sherry Welsh, one of the owners of Connell Resources. Um next slide. So this is our agenda. We're going to basically follow the same format. We're going to explain to you a little bit of the background. We're going to explain to you why each of the appeal grounds stated by the appellant have not been met and why we are asking you to uphold the decision of the planning commission. Next slide. This is just a little bit of background about Connell Resources. This slide's already in your packet, so I'm not going to read it to you. One of the key points I want to mention on this slide, though, is that Connell Resources has been safely operating asphalt plants exactly like the one proposed here in Wellington for many, many years and um has a large number of employees located at their current plant and a large number of employees that currently live within the town of Wellington. And if this is approved, they of course continue, intend to continue to safely operate that plant for the benefit of the community and their employees. Next slide. Uh this is again, is just a little bit of a summary of the history, and I know that Mr. Sapiens already provided this, so I won't spend too much time on it other than to mention just a couple of things. Number one, this site is zoned heavy industrial. It has been zoned heavy industrial for a very long time in your code. You recently updated your zoning code and your comprehensive plan and did not change that, even though the immediately adjacent property had then at that time been zoned residential. Um that residential property that we're talking about, that is really the principal trigger, if you will, for the arguments made by the appellant, has not been developed. It is subdivided and platted, but it's not developed. There are no homes there today. An asphalt mixing plant is a use permitted by right under the town code in the heavy industrial zone district. Just want to emphasize those relevant facts. For each of the grounds of appeal and also the full history, the background, we summarize that a little bit in our letter, which is in your agenda packet for tonight at page seventeen. Knowing we'd be time constrained tonight, I wouldn't have a chance to go through all that. We put it in writing for you. And I hope you've had a chance to review that, and I hope you'll have a chance to take a look back on it. Uh next slide. Um this is just a reiteration of that zoning map. Next slide. Um one other thing I want to mention about the history, and that is that, as was sort of alluded to a little bit in the prior presentations, the Board of Adjustment did hear and rule in a public hearing on a request for a variance from the thousand foot setback to reduce that setback to eight setback to eight hundred feet. And at that time, that ruling was not appealed. That decision of the Board of Adjustment is final. The question, and I actually agree with Mr. Colors on this, the question of whether or not the setback applies, the twenty-six forty that the appellants are referring to applies, is an easy yes or no question, and the answer is no. And even if you thought it might apply or it should have applied, or you want to talk about whether it applies or not, that question has already been decided, and the time for appealing that has long passed. That is one of the reasons why the planning commission did not uh end up entertaining that and addressing it in great detail. That ruling was made by the Board of Adjustment on October twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-two. Okay. Uh the other thing I want to mention about the procedure is that, of course, at the initial proceeding in front of the planning commission, as the applicant, Connell Resources, had the burden of proof of demonstrating that all of the criteria for approval of a site plan were met. In an appeal situation like this, that burden of proof now shifts to the appellant. They have the burden of proof. That's why they get the last word. They get a rebuttal because they have to prove to you that there was clear error and not that the decision of the planning commission on the issues were fairly debatable. We're going to prove to you that it was not clear error and that it is fairly debatable. Uh this uh site shows you the, this shows you the rough location. It shows you some of what's around it. And the other thing that I just would like to mention for the record is that all of the immediately adjacent property owners colored in blue here have expressed support for this asphalt plant in this location. Next slide. Ah, this is the slide I just talked about. I got ahead of myself. So this is the Board of Adjustment. Um approve the variance unanimously, five to zero, with certain conditions, all of which have been met, and none of those conditions are really at issue right now. Next slide. So let's talk first about why the twenty-six forty setback is not applicable. The appellants argue that the application violates section fifteen four thirty-five one of your code. Heavy industrial use producing or curating toxic chemicals must be at least twenty-six forty feet from a residential zone district. This use does not produce or curate toxic chemicals. Period. Let me say that again, in case you might not be able to hear it. This use does not produce or curate toxic chemicals. There is a mountain of evidence in the record that supports that conclusion. So I agree it's a clear yes or no answer. The answer is no. That setback doesn't apply. This property does not produce or curate toxic chemicals. Let me explain why. This list, this slide lists some of the various um different pieces of evidence that were in the record to this, to this effect. Um multitude of credible evidence, including a letter from the National Asphalt Pavement Association, a later letter from the Agency for Toxic Substances and Disease Registry, analysis of various state and local officials, the independent analysis that was performed by the two consultants retained by Connell Resources. And as the appellant's lawyer just said, the EPA and the state have actually done this work for you. When the Laramo County Public Health Official got up and stated that in their estimation, based on a review of all the data, based on the review and their own understanding of the state standards, the EPA standards, none of the emissions likely to come from this plant will exceed the levels which are known to be harmful to human health. Therefore, they are not toxic. The whole point of having those threshold levels and having those regulatory standards in the permit is to be able to measure if they're going to exceed the limits which are potentially harmful to human health. Toxic doesn't mean, I mean, gosh, everything in this room is potentially toxic if you consumed it in great enough quantities. But with all of the chemicals that are potentially emitted by not only this plant, but a variety of other uses that already exist in your town, in order for those chemicals to truly be toxic, to potentially threaten human health, they have to exceed a certain minimum level. And that is why we have the regulatory permitting system that we have. Another relevant fact is, you see on here, we've got this chart that has all the different kinds of placards that the Federal Department of Transportation requires on vehicles which transport toxic chemicals. None of those are required for vehicles which transport asphalt or the components of production of asphalt. Asphalt is made of ninety-five percent um gravel and aggregate and five percent the cement that holds it together, neither of which are toxic either alone or when combined as asphalt. That's why the only placard that's required on the trucks is that the material is hot, not any of these that represent that it might be toxic. Next slide. Um this is a summary of all the different pieces of evidence that support that conclusion that I just explained for you. I won't repeat it and I won't read it to you, but you can see that, as I said, there is a mountain of evidence in the record. Way above and beyond anything that you typically would see for any type of zoning or site plan permit approval like this. And all of it points to the fact that there are no toxic chemicals here to be concerned about because everything here is any emissions that might be coming from this plant are well below the levels which might potentially threaten human health. In fact, the expert that was retained by Connell at the request of the town to analyze that question concluded that the levels were de minimis, lacking significance or importance so minor as to merit disregard. And there's not been any evidence provided to the contrary on that point. Next slide. This is the slide that was presented by the Laramo County Health Official. These are her words. We did not change this slide except to add the highlighting in the third bullet to show you the language that I'm referring to when I say that she concluded that the levels to be produced by this asphalt plant would be below the chronic and acute levels known to cause harmful health impacts. Next slide. So that takes care of the twenty-six forty. It's not applicable. It's not applicable for two reasons. One, because there's no toxic chemicals here, and two, because it's already been decided and it was not properly appealed back at the time of the Board of Adjustment decision. Now I want to talk about these other sort of more minor setbacks that have been raised by the appellants. Um the first one is, hey, you've got a bunch of ancillary uses here that are part of the asphalt plant that we think actually look more like light industrial uses, and hey, your code has a two hundred and fifty foot setback for light industrial uses. All these uses are too close to the property line for the two hundred and fifty foot setback from residential uses. There are no light industrial uses on this property. This is a heavy industrial property. It is a heavy industrial use. All these little parts and pieces, like the pile of aggregate and the place where we park the trucks, and there's no truck washing station anymore, by the way. Um and all of the different parts are all accessory components of the principal heavy industrial use. To interpret it differently and to say, hey, we have an office use over here because you're going to have a building where your employees keep their computers, and we also have a light industrial use over here because if you didn't have an asphalt plant, this truck wash would be a a light industrial use. It, that's not how your zoning code works. Your zoning code classifies the property with one zone district, and this use is classified as one use. And all those other components that are being separately measured against separate setbacks under separate uses are really part of and accessory to and ancillary to the main use of heavy industrial. Now, look, if you want to interpret your code differently and you want to say, hey, this little storage building over here is its own separate light industrial use and it needs to be two hundred and fifty feet, it's temporary, it's movable. All of these components are, except for the main asphalt plant. Actually, it's technically movable too, but we already put it in the far northernmost corner so that it meets the eight hundred foot setback. So that was why we had suggested that if you wish to interpret your code differently than you traditionally have and consider these separate ancillary components of the project as separate light industrial uses and require them to meet a two hundred and fifty foot setback, then simply make that a condition and we can move them to comply with that condition. But that was never raised during the site plan discussion because your staff was interpreting the code the way they always historically have and was considering all of those uses as part of the main heavy industrial use. Next slide. This is what it would look like if all those little things shifted slightly to the east to get away from that westernmost property line, and it would change the site plan very, very little in the most minor way. Next slide. The same is true of the so-called contractor and contractor storage. Not really a separate use. It's really part of the principal use. It's an accessory use to the heavy industrial. But as you could see on the original site plan, we pasted in the southwesternmost corner, partly in consultation with staff because it was felt that the putting the building in that location would create additional buffering, visual buffering in addition to the berm, so that people viewing the site from the southwest would um have their view uh of the potential asphalt plant further to the northeast impeded by this little building and the landscaping and the berm. So it was placed as close as possible to the property line in order to create that buffering. However, if you want to consider it as a separate use and you want to judge it by a different setback and not consider it as an accessory use, same thing. We can scooch it a little bit to the east and we can comply with an additional condition if that's how you would like to change the way that the town has historically interpreted the zoning code. Next slide. The site plan also complies, as shown right now today, with the eight hundred foot setback. Um as as I, as I mentioned before, you know, some of the so one of the big things, if you read the transcript or watched the video of the planning commission, that planning commission was deliberating is where do you measure the eight hundred feet from? Assuming for a minute that the eight hundred feet is the right setback, whatever the setback is, where do you measure it from? You measure it from the property line. Do you measure it from the closest structure? And staff informed the planning commission that the way that the town code directs you to measure the setback is from the intensity of the use, just like within your um in the your marijuana code. You don't measure it from the property line. You measure it from where the transaction is taking place from the building. And so in this case, that eight hundred feet is measured from the asphalt plant, which is the heavy industrial use and the use on this property that has the most potential impact visually and otherwise to the adjacent neighbors. So that use was um thoughtfully and intentionally placed in the far northeasternmost corner of the site. All the things that are around it are ancillary, temporary components of that use, like the place where we pile the aggregate before it goes into the, before it goes into the asphalt plant. All of those things can be moved just a couple of feet to the east in order to comply if you want every single thing on this site that has to do with the heavy industrial use to be within the eight hundred foot setback. We can do that if you would like to impo- ah, impose such a condition. But I might mention that this exact site plan right here that you see is what was presented to the Board of Adjustment when they approved the eight hundred feet foot setback, meaning that the Board of Adjustment knew when they approved it that there were some components, like the aggregate piles of the heavy industrial use that were not fully within the eight hundred foot setback. So they clearly interpreted it that way as well. Next slide. Turning now to the issue of um keeping all the impacts confined to the site, which is a requirement in the Wellington Town Code, not only in the heavy industrial zone district, but in the light industrial zone district. The appellants argue that the site plan violates this criterion in the code because one hundred percent of all the dust, fumes, odors, smoke, vapor, and noise cannot be confined to the site. They claim that the site plan is not consistent with the town comprehensive plan because it doesn't meet this particular requirement. And the planning commission also spent a fair bit of time analyzing and discussing what is really the intent of this and how should it be interpreted? Does this mean, as the appellants are now arguing, that not one single molecule of dust of dust or emissions or odor or anything else can ever escape from the boundaries of the site? If that were the standard, you already have a lot of uses in your town code that are probably violating that right now today and should not have received their permit. The truth is, you know, if I walk into McDonald's and I walk out again, I'm probably tracking some dirt with me from the site, right? So it clearly was not meant to be interpreted that absolutely and that concretely. And interestingly enough, the appellants, on the one hand, argue that the first criterion that they mentioned, the twenty-six forty, should be interpreted with a little bit of intent and not absolutely, but that this one should be interpreted absolutely. You sort of can't have it both ways. Either they're all absolute or they all have a bit of interpretation and a bit of intent. And staff clearly testified at the planning commission that the way staff has historically interpreted that requirement is to mean that so long as anything which does escape the site is mitigated to the maximum extent possible, meets all state, local, and federal requirements, and does not create any health or human safety hazards, then it meets that criterion. And that's exactly what happened here. And it does, in fact, this application, this site plan, does in fact meet that criterion. If that were not the correct interpretation, you wouldn't need that separate language that says, "and compliance with state air pollution laws." It's simply not possible for any development, any use, to have one hundred percent, I mean, we're going to build a glass box around every use within the site to contain one hundred percent of all the dust, noise, odors, and vapor. It's just simply not possible. Next slide, please. There are multiple third-party studies that confirm that as interpreted by staff and interpreted by the planning commission, this site plan complies with that requirement. What you see on the slide here is a quote from the transcript from the planning commission hearing in which the town planning director explains their interpretation of this. Again, I won't read it to you. I just want to highlight and draw your attention to it in the record. And I'm going to quickly flip now through a series of slides, all of which were in the record offered at planning commission that demonstrate that same fact. This slide summarizes some of the ways in which off-site impacts are being mitigated. And here we're looking at not only potential emissions and the Board of Adjustment conditions of approval, but also things like limitation on operations and hours of operation. Thoughtful planting and landscaping for visual impact. Relocation of the, excuse me, improvements to local infrastructure. Low water landscape use. No town water is going to be used to take care of the landscaping on this site. These are some of the other ways in which impact has been mitigated on this site. Next slide. These are all the additional studies above and beyond that which is normally required in your code for a site plan that were performed by the applicant. There are four separate studies related to air quality, groundwater monitoring, stormwater, drainage, wildlife impact, noise assessment, and odor. All of which demonstrated that anything that does escape the site will be well within the limits of health and human safety and are mitigated to the maximum extent possible. Next slide.
Ms. White, you have ten minutes remaining.
Thank you. This is a summary of all the external third-party permits that are required and a demonstration of what some of the enforcement levels are if those permits are violated. Next slide. This is a summary of some of the can't read it. Yeah. This is a comparison of major versus minor source emitters. These are the sources of actual amounts of pollutants that potentially come close to toxic chemicals, amounts that actually threaten health and human safety because they come close to chronic or acute levels. The amount of emissions projected to come from this asphalt plant and actually measured from this and other existing asphalt plants is orders of magnitude well below these numbers. Next slide. Summary of all the studies. Next slide. This is the table presented by one of the experts who presented at the planning commission. And the numbers highlighted in green there are the numbers and the analysis demonstrating how far below the measurable or acute or chronic levels each of the potential emissions from this site would be. Next slide. Next slide. Next slide. This is another table from that same study, similarly showing that any emissions will be de minimis or so low and so small as to be able to be disregarded. Next slide. One of the things the Larimer County Health Department said is that the main issue that they're focused on is something like ozone, which is a regional issue. It's actually not one of the things talked about in some of those other slides. And where, because it's a regional issue, because the interactions, the chemical interactions in the atmosphere that created are regional in nature, the precise location of things such as an asphalt plant or other types of heavy industrial uses that potentially could impact ozone is really immaterial. In other words, if it didn't go here, but it went somewhere else in northern Colorado, it would have the same impact either way. Next slide. This is the conclusion slide from the expert concluding that any emissions would be minimal. Can I go, can we go back there? Minimal, no, no, that one, yeah. Sorry, we're having a slide problem here. Not that one. That one. Minimal compared to existing background levels, meaning all of these emissions that are cited as being of concern are already present in background levels already in the atmosphere today and the amount contributed, if any, by this plant will be small in comparison to the existing background levels. Next slide. Not talked about a lot, but we just want to mention that we did present to the planning commission about odor mitigation and demonstrate how odor will not be violating this criterion leaving the site. Next slide. And also conducted a voluntary noise assessment study in order to demonstrate that any noise generated by this facility will be well within any required levels. Next slide. I've got three slides demonstrating this point. Next one. Okay, the last point that was made by the applicant, and I won't spend too much time on this, but this is one of the several sheets that were provided as it relates to the elevations requirement in order to demonstrate what the ultimate structure is going to look like. And a couple of things I want to mention about that. First of all, there were some exemplars submitted. This is an example of one of them, and it does have dimensions. But it is also true, as was stated by the appellant's attorney, that in consultation with staff, Connell was directed that it could and should defer some of the drawings it might otherwise submit in this category for a variety of reasons, one being to see whether the site plan was going to be approved or not. But also at least one of the structures that's going to be built here, the shop, is part of a later phase. It's phase two. And so the elevations have not been prepared for that yet, and they're not going to be prepared for quite some time because it's part of a later phase. Almost everything that's going to be on here, other than the shop and the office, is not what you would traditionally consider a building for which elevations typically would be drawn and delivered, like you would normally see architecture for a multifamily apartment building or an office building or a house. So that is why what was provided to the staff in order to fulfill this requirement to the best of our ability at the time were some photographs and illustrations showing what the current site looks like and what these types of equipments generally look like when they're located in other places. You don't really have elevations, for example, for the aggregate storage bins. It's a concrete wall where the aggregate piles up inside. You don't really do dimensioned elevations for something like that or submit materials boards with the color palette. And so, given that the renderings that were submitted are reflective of the design in terms of the quality, and can I have the next slide, please? That requirement also includes that you, includes a requirement that you submit a narrative explaining the vision of what they're going to look like. This is an excerpt from that narrative that was submitted. It describes the materials. It describes the structures. It describes the orientation of the buildings, where they're going to be located, and generally what they're going to look like. Taken in combination, we think that these absolutely fulfill the requirement, especially when you consider the fact that staff did authorize the deferral of this particular requirement. And I will mention that the code does authorize staff to defer certain requirements of the site plan. Next slide. So, we do suggest that if you are concerned about the two-hundred-and-fifty feet, the hundred feet for some of those small ancillary components of the asphalt plant, that you could impose conditions of approval to address that. We've drafted a couple suggestions here of that language. They were provided ahead of time to all of you and to the town attorney and to the opposing council. So in case you decide to go that way, we just wanted to have some words for you to react to. Next slide. And this slide shows on the left, the site plan that was originally presented to the Board of Adjustment, originally submitted as part of the packet. This one to the right shows with the circle in red and the little highlighted dimensioned engineered measurements in green, what it would look like if you moved all of the small ancillary movable objects to which the appellants object if that condition were imposed. Next slide.
Ms. White, you have three minutes.
Thank you. In conclusion, then, Connell Resources has demonstrated that the proposed site plan meets the town's criteria for site plan approval. The planning commission went well above and beyond its normal role in examining a wide variety of components, data, testimony, and credible evidence provided by a wide variety of credentialed and professional experts in order to address the issues and concerns that were raised and in order to protect the public health, safety, and welfare. And the applicant has provided, as I said, mountains of additional information about the extensive regulation and safety of the proposed use. The proposed site plan is a safe addition to the area. It complies with the zoning of the property. It complies with all the conditions of approval, with the town's comprehensive plan goals. And it meets all of the town's approval criteria, and there is no credible evidence in the record otherwise. Therefore, the planning commission's decision, worst-case scenario, was fairly debatable. It certainly was not clear error. And we ask you therefore to uphold it, with or without the suggested conditions as you prefer. Thank you for your time and attention, and since I won't have the opportunity to speak to you again, I do just refer you to that seventeen-page, the letter at page seventeen in your packet to which further outlines our position on some of the allegations made by the appellants.
Thank you.
So I'll take my opportunity to do a brief rebuttal. First of all, the prior proceeding in front of the Board of Adjustment, this is the variance moving the setback from eight thousand to eight-hundred feet. That was the only thing that was at issue in front of the Board of Adjustment. So, the only thing, when that was, when that proceeding was concluded, the only thing that was really appealable was whether the Board of Adjustment correctly or incorrectly granted that variance. So just because there was a variance procedure for this, for one setback, I don't think it's fair to take that as, you know, a decision, an appealable decision by the Board of Adjustment that none of the other setbacks in the code applied. Because the only thing at issue in front of them again was whether to grant that eight-hundred, you know, grant a small break on the thousand-foot variance. Now regarding the accessory use argument from Connell Resources, I mean, the main argument seems to be that, well, this whole site is heavy industrial, and so all the accessory uses kind of get a pass from any other setbacks that would apply. And I don't think that's the, I don't think the code says that. That seems contrary to the purpose of the code to have free rein over the rest of the site just because it's, because part of it is heavy industrial. I also note that we didn't, we didn't, my presentation, we didn't actually include the issue about site impacts being confined to the site. So, just want to point that out. I mean, Connell's attorney did bring that up, but I didn't actually argue that because I think, I think they're right. I don't think that's meant to be taken literally. But I did mention the, kind of this part two of that provision in the code, which is that the site comply with all applicable permits. So I'll leave you with my thoughts on this toxic chemical issue. The code says, the code says producing and curating toxic chemicals. It doesn't say producing and, it doesn't say the setback applies only if the use is producing and curating chemicals in toxic concentrations. That's contrary to the language of the code. And this is, this is kind of another iteration of McConnell's permit shield defense that, well, they've got a permit and that keeps the levels, you know, it's safe, that keeps the levels of the hazardous, the HAPS and other emissions at safe levels, so this setback shouldn't apply. My response is, well, I mean, the code says what it says, and we can have that fight at the end of the variance proceeding. And they're not de minimis. I mean, if they were de minimis, then there wouldn't be a air quality, there wouldn't be four air quality permits that have to be, that the plant has to apply for and obtain. One of those permits specifically addresses four of the HAPS, the hazardous air pollutants. And that does, that does produce, that does establish maximum emission levels for that plant. The point is that those are toxic chemicals that are going to be emitted. And again, the code doesn't say toxic chemicals, it doesn't say chemicals in toxic concentrations. It just says toxic chemicals. That's all for my rebuttal.
Thank you.
Now is the portion of this, this appeal hearing for deliberations by the board. During this time, questions or requests for clarification may be directed toward the parties to the extent possible. If I can answer questions for you, I will, but mostly I'd like to limit that to directing you to portions of the record. If you have a question or where to find something. Or alternatively, if you'd like me to reiterate the findings, or if you have questions on those kind of procedural issues. You have specific questions, though, like I said, you can direct those to the parties themselves. But primarily, this is, this is an opportunity for deliberation on the issues that have been raised. So, it is eight o'clock. I might also suggest a recess at some point.
Yeah, let's take a five-minute recess right now. I now call the special meeting of Wellington Board of Trustees, twenty-twenty-three, or August twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three, meeting back in session, time being eight oh six P M. Okay, so now it's time for us to discuss this. I think the best way for us to keep things corralled up here, our thoughts corralled, we'll just attack each one of these bullet points one-on-one for the appellant, obviously. So that first one is going to be a on page twelve in your packet if you're not on it. And that's going to be the first setback violation. And we'll start with trustee Mason.
Yeah, actually, I do have a clarifying question, I think, for Mr. Sapienza on this, and that is, yeah. In regard to this appeal, you mentioned at the beginning of tonight's meeting that we had to remain within the decision-making ability of the planning commission. So my question is, is it even within this board's ability to consider overturning the variance granted by the Board of Adjustments and instead consider that the property should be required to abide by the twenty-six forty setback?
It is not within this board's authority. It was not within the planning commission's authority to override the planning, excuse me, the Board of Adjustments variance. The planning commission did discuss whether the twenty-six hundred forty-foot setback applied or whether the one-thousand-foot setback applied. And the planning, to my understanding, the Board of Adjustment did not discuss whether the twenty-six hundred forty, two-thousand-six hundred forty-foot setback applied. So you cannot overturn that variance, whether my understanding was that that variance was a variance from the one-thousand-foot setback. my understanding was that that variance was a variance from the one thousand foot setback. Was, there was the request from the, it was from the applicant. So if this board, in, in my opinion, if this board decides that the twenty-six, two thousand six hundred forty foot setback for curating and producing toxic chemicals applies, then that was not a variance granted by the Board of Adjustment. So does that answer your question?
So that could be a decision maker right at that point?
The, again, cannot override the variance offered. However, a decision, if this board decide, interprets the code that this is a use producing or curating toxic chemicals, then that's not something that was discussed at the Board of Adjustment. That was discussed at the, the Planning Commission about which one did apply. So my opinion is that the board, th- this board could make that decision that the two thousand six hundred forty foot setback does apply.
And with that, can the decision be overturned?
Which decision?
Well, if we did the twenty-six forty, then we can
The appellants have said that they believe that this use is one that is, produces or curates toxic chemicals. If this board has been convinced by the evidence produced tonight that asphalt mixing plant is a use that produces or curates toxic chemicals as discussed in our code, then it would acquire a two thousand six hundred foot, two thousand six hundred forty foot setback. So if that's your decision, then yes, that would need to be overturned.
Trustee Mason, you have anything further for section A?
That's it for now.
Trustee David?
Besides the, the items provided from the EPA, do the appellants have any other sources of studies or items that you can direct us to in the, the report, the current documents that we have available regarding toxicity concerns?
There's a whole lot of reports in the packet, you know, that kind of go both ways as far as the toxicity of asphalt production. So I, I don't have like specific, I can't give you like a specific go to page this and this, like sitting here right now.
Okay, the one you referenced in your presentation was those provided by EPA, right?
The chart that I, was in my presentation was a chart created by, and I'm sure Connell will tell me if I'm wrong, but my, I believe it is a chart created for the air quality study to show like what the expected emissions are going to be from that particular plant. At least for purposes of the air quality study.
I guess I have a question, I mean, among our group or finding in the record as to determine, oh, the, the pelli, pelli, did I say it right?
Let's just, let's refer to the parties by their, by their names.
They provided a long list of sources and studies that determine, of course, there is potential traces of toxic concerns, but that those levels are under any levels that are deemed harmful. Right? And I have a long list of those that were quoted, both in their presentation and I see available in the studies. And then studies provided in the record. So I guess my question there is, and one of those is actually the same record that was provided for both sides, but just what levels are considered harmful or not. So I guess my question is if for the first section regarding the setbacks of twenty-six forty versus a thousand, or therefore eight hundred per the Board of Adjustments, we really need to determine of those studies, you know, is there an error in that decision? Or is that something that is, I have the right, have the right words? Error or debatable? What's the correct word?
Clear error versus whether it is fairly debatable.
Fairly debatable. And so I guess my question is, we have sources showing on both directions of that. And one of them has a lengthy list of different studies and those available. The other one, there's also common sources there. So whether or not there's an error in using that data, I wouldn't say that that is necessarily the case. It's whether or not they're debatable, right? There's both directions of that argument. So in my mind, I can't see a potential for error because both of them have available sources that say either contradictory or interpret that same data in different ways. So that's, that's the thing I wanted to put out there unless there's something I'm significantly missing in the record that would indicate that those studies or information provided are false or in error. So I guess that's my question to everyone, if there's any indication of that in the record that you've seen, I haven't seen. I've seen both, both directions, so.
Thank you. Anything further? For a, perfect, trustee Gator?
All right, let me get back to the correct section here. All right. So I think in just looking at the deliberations, again, the question is, is whether there's a clear error. So I know one of the things that was brought up was there was a, we can't overturn the Board of Adjustments. I think as Mr. Sapienza clearly stated, there was never a, never brought to the Board of Adjustments the twenty-six forty. That was never something that was brought. So it has, it's completely separate. What was brought was a thousand foot. They approved eight hundred feet. That is completely different from the twenty-six forty. And I think that the concern that I have is the twenty-six forty setback does not talk about levels. It talks about if there are toxic materials, chemicals produced or curated. And it doesn't say anything whether that's the primary source, whether that's the primary purpose. It doesn't go into great detail. And I think that the Lysicos have made a good point that what is the purpose of setbacks? The purposes of setbacks is to protect against the unknown. They never made an argument that, oh, the levels are beyond permitted levels or beyond EPA levels. They simply said the EPA monitors these things because there are health concerns if they're in significant levels, you know, if there's these chemicals are being pumped in the window of your house, there's going to be a problem. Now there's permits to say, okay, you have to be at least this far away. Well, in our land use code, there's typically a reason we've set, put setbacks in place to say, hey, if we have things that are potentially going to have these things, we don't have our own health department. We don't have our own air quality department. Our setbacks is how we as municipalities say we are going to protect this other use from this use that has whatever going on. In this case, it could be slaughtering of animals or the production or curation of toxic chemicals. So I don't think the question, and it wasn't raised, I felt, by Lysicos that, oh, the levels are too high. I didn't hear that one time. I didn't see, I did see that in public comment. There were a lot of concerns about that. But in the materials provided by the Lysicos, there was nothing presented saying, well, we're concerned that levels are too high. They were simply saying, these are being produced and the studies show, even though the levels are lower than the permitted requirements, these items that are known to be toxic chemicals are a byproduct of the process, whether it's the fuel aspect, whether it's the mixing aspect, these are produced. And our code does not go in and say, well, as long as they're produced under certain levels. There are separate portions of our code that do talk about complying with permits. But that setback has nothing to do with permits. And so to me, that is fairly clear that I, and again, I think the question was brought up, is our code too strict? And if that's so, that's a discussion that we need to have with the Planning Commission, the Plan Department, and the board. Do we need to change that setback? That can't happen tonight. There is a process set out for that. And so my consideration is, I believe that the Planning Commission, and they did discuss this, but I believe they did err in not following what is clearly written in the code. There was, I felt clear evidence that there are chemicals produced, whether they're the main product or they're a byproduct, they are coming out of the plant. Connell's done a good job at mitigating that, keeping them at safe levels, but that, again, the setback does not talk anything about levels. It simply says, are they a part of this process? And there can be, I know there was discussion about, well, levels at burger joints and there was a lot of studies and one talking about hamburger cooking is at these levels too. And it's okay, and maybe we need to look at putting this requirement on fast food joints, but we're not talking about a fast food joint tonight. We're talking about industrial, and that's where the setback is currently. And again, if that setback needs to be changed, that's fine, but that's not the decision that we're being asked to make tonight. So I do believe that there was adequate evidence to show that there are chemicals produced that are toxic and that I think that setback does apply. And I think that was pretty clear. So I would say that in that, I believe the Planning Commission did err.
Thank you.
Trustee Teets?
Okay, so when I looked at this, I looked at this as an observation of it didn't matter what, at the end of the day, what the setbacks were set at. It did not matter what that setback pertained to regarding to the properties around the home. When I looked at it, I looked at it as are toxins being created in this setting. So, and I wanted to point you to page one oh nine in our packet. And this is the EPA hot mix asphalt plant's emission assessment report submitted to us and put into our packet. If you look, there's
Sorry.
So one oh nine in my electronic packet is a memorandum.
One fifty-nine in the electronic packet. Yeah, the, the electronic packet doesn't match up to the printed pages, so.
Oh, sorry, I have
No, you're good. It's roughly, I think, fifty pages off, so just add fifty.
And four.
Apologies. This was the page conundrum, I think we were talking about.
It is, and that's why I wanted to slow down once you referenced a page, so.
Got it.
Which page?
That's not it either. Wait, you said page one oh nine?
Yeah, so it starts at or do we go?
We're going to eighteen thirty-three.
Eighteen thirty-three. Yep, so not that one or that one, but that middle one. Apologies.
No, you're fine.
So, and this is the EPA hot mix asphalt plants emissions assessment. I did read this whole assessment and the page that stuck out to me was page eighteen forty-nine, where it actually starts reporting on the hazardous materials produced, but it
So what page specifically is that reporting?
I think, I think she's, I think she stated the right page.
Eighteen forty-nine. Yep.
Thank you.
Yes. Would it be better if I did it on my computer?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Got it.
Page, yeah, I think it's electronic page eighteen forty-nine. I think, yeah, if you're, if we're looking, yeah.
So this lists volatile chemicals and HF, HMAs, but then you jump to, sorry, I'm bouncing around here some, but we were looking for additional information. Eighteen fifty-nine and eighteen sixty. And you start reading through this, and these are all the estimated annual emissions for typical, the plants. And then you read through them, you look down at the bottom, and there is an asterisk that says uncontrolled emissions. And almost every single listing on here, it goes through the storage tanks at the plant. It goes through the dryer process. There's a large amount. But all of these ones list uncontrolled emissions. These are ones that cannot be caught in filters. These are ones that will absolutely be something you won't be able to trap. And this is what will be going into the air. So when I look at it, I do agree. I do not feel that it was an intentional error, but I do feel it was a lack of full information. But at the end of the day, really, truly, the twenty-six forty was not granted for producing toxic chemicals. So when I look at this, I look at it as black and white, and it's either producing toxic chemicals or it's not. And this one is producing those chemicals. So that was my rationality behind it.
So it's down there, you're talking page eighteen sixty-four at the bottom of that chart, where it says uncontrolled emissions from a hundred thousand tons of hot mixed asphalt per year. Is that what you're referring to?
Sorry, every page has an uncontrolled.
And
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'll note, this report was submitted as part of the public written comments, and I, I think it might be appropriate to have the, the parties address a, a report of this magnitude. I think
I would love that.
I am not a professional on asphalt plant emissions, and I think understanding this report, it would be appropriate to have the parties, uh, uh, speak to an issue like this.
Yeah.
So. Would you like to address this? I briefly looked at that report, and I think it basically is a report of just kind of asphalt plants just as a whole, like not, it's not specifically about the Connell plant. It's just a, I think it's, I think it was generated for EPA's, you know, like as part of their mission to control, you know, air emissions for public health. So it's just part of what they do. And that's about, that's all I can say about it.
To clarify, you're saying that's a very broad study?
You know, I don't since, since I don't have a very good memory of what exactly that was, I, I guess I don't want to say anything more because I don't want to say something wrong.
Okay.
Quite honestly.
Okay.
I'm not trying to
No, you're fine. I just, thank you.
Keep stuff from you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Once again, Carolyn White, I'll introduce John Warren here to speak to that in just a second. A couple of quick points about that report. One, it's dated December two thousand. It's quite old and technology has progressed significantly since the time when this report was produced. As you mentioned, it's, if you look at page Roman at four of that report, it lists a whole bunch of different APA reports, each of which is about a different kind of asphalt plant. This particular report is about a typical drum mix HMA facility, which is not the kind of plant that we're talking about here, although I'm going to let Mr. Warren explain that to you in a little bit more detail. And then the last point I wanted to make about uncontrolled emissions. In this context, that reference doesn't mean they cannot be controlled, even with filters. What it means is that's how much emissions the EPA predicts would be emitted from this kind of facility in two thousand, if it didn't have any filters on it at all. That, so we're saying, well, if you didn't do anything to try to mitigate, here's what it would be for this kind of plant back in two thousand.
I, I guess, again, John Warren, President of Connell Resources, to, to put that into context, those reports are out there, it is dated to, you know, of year two thousand. Obviously, technology, even in asphalt plants, has come a long way in twenty-three years. This is why the Planning Commission asked us to go out on the, on the March sixth, Planning Commission date and, and take extra time to go do the site specific studies, the studies based off of our plant, which is a counterflow drum mixed plant. And we do have capture on all of the oil tanks. We have captures on all of the emissions. We have a bag house that captures and, and filters all of that. So again, their confusion at that time was, well, how do we know this plant? So all of our studies were based off of site specific and based off of the actual equipment we're using versus a generalized study from the year two thousand that the EPA put out. So our studies show that, again, de minimis airly, air emissions. And again, according to multiple experts and even Laramore County Health Department, and they peer reviewed it with the Colorado Department of Public Health, that report that came up with the same conclusions. So there are not any uncontrolled emissions from our plant. Again, that's an old study and why the Planning Commission actually took the time to have us go do site specific analysis. Sure.
So will you be producing toxic chemicals?
No.
None?
No. We're mixing two raw materials together.
When they combine, does it make any kind of chemicals?
It does not.
Thank you. Trustee Teets, do you have anything further? On A? No?
No.
Okay. Just A, yeah. Trustee Wigan?
Okay, this is a question directed towards our attorney here. In the land use code, doesn't say, it doesn't say anything about excess toxins as per the twenty-six forty setback? Or does it just say anything that would produce toxins?
The language in the land use code applies to a heavy industrial or heavy industrial manufacturing that produces or curates toxic chemicals.
It does not say anything about to a chronic or
Produces or curates toxic chemicals.
Produces or curates toxic chemicals. That's the only language.
Okay.
Would you like me to read that section?
Yes, if you wouldn't mind.
Any industrial manufacturing, heavy use, producing and curating toxic chemicals or conducting animal slaughtering shall be located at least A, two thousand six hundred forty feet from any residential district, religious land use, medical care facility, or school. B, one thousand three hundred twenty feet from any commercial use. C, six hundred sixty feet from any industrial and manufacturing light use.
Gator?
For curate, would that be interpreted as someone who is like, their business is to produce that chemical? I guess that's the, I'm, I'm curious.
Dan, can you give us a Webster definition?
Every time I hear it's like, is that a business whose intent is to make a toxic chemical?
I, I think.
Like, that's their product.
I think as noted by the parties, uh, the phrase produces or c- curates toxic chemicals is not defined in our code.
Okay.
So, um.
I think that's why it is in debate right now. Okay.
Thank you.
And I did just want to point out, if, uh, we did not have Sundance involved in this, it wouldn't even be a discussion right now. But we have to give that possible future, uh, development as much cr- uh, credit as we're going to give Buffalo Creek or anybody else. Thank you.
Nothing further on A? Thank you. Mayor Burke Tim?
I don't have any questions for the, um, appealees or appealants. I think our, our challenge and our question is about, you know, the finite interpretation of a definition. And if the governing bodies misinterpreted that definition during our decision-making. So, where, where did it fall apart and where do we sit on making that finite interpretation of the definition? No.
Yeah, I think, I mean, along with what Trustee Daly said, um, we're here to find error or determine whether it's debatable, right? Um, I think our board just proved it's debatable. And on top of that, from my experience back when I was a first responder, placards are put on toxic chemicals. These don't require placards. And that really intrigued me to the fact that that would tell me that it's not toxic. So, that's where I'm at on A. So, as a board, any further comments on A?
Yeah, I, I guess I would say in this regard that there, there are a number of different agencies that have already looked at this, including the U.S. Department of Transportation. They've said that asphalt plant cement is non-hazardous. OSHA has said that they don't regulate exco- exposure limits to asphalt fumes. The Agency for Toxic Substances and Disease Registry concluded asphalt mixing plants do not pose a public health hazard. The EPA, possibly the most restrictive government entity in this country, in two thousand two, removed asphalt plants uh, as a major source of murder, um, emitter and reaffirm this as well in two thousand fourteen, that asphalt mixing plants are in fact a minor source emitter. Uh, LC, uh, Laramore County Public Health, uh, referred to the National Ambient Air Quality Standards for Public Health Protection, including the health of sensitive populations citing that discussions with CDPE do not show significant health impact. And quite frankly, I agree with, uh, Dr. Stephen Zemba's comments on page nineteen fifty-six and nineteen fifty-seven of the electronic packet, uh, regarding his comments on de minimis, uh, and what that, what that means exactly. When we're talking about that, that is a one in a million extra cancer risk. For this particular, uh, plant, uh, the, uh, if you take the highest model concentration, and this is quoting from the packet, if you take the highest, uh, model concentration at the resident southeast and you assume seven years of exposure and you multiply by the unit risk, you get the cancer risks converted to a per million basis, and that, in that final column, those add up to a total of point zero three six per million. Uh, you would add that to the value of, uh, your chances of getting cancer in your lifetime, which is a four hundred ten thousand in one million chance. So, point zero three six on top of four hundred ten thousand is nothing.
Where are you seeing this?
Page nineteen fifty-six.
All those numbers are listed in there?
Absolutely.
In the middle of the page.
The development of Sundance was also mentioned, and I did notice that there was a specific entry of a letter from the developer of Sundance.
In favor of the asphalt plant?
Yeah, saying that that was much less, uh, risk than other industrial uses that they would suspect would be there. And so, I don't know. I just want to bring attention to that since the development was mentioned.
Yeah.
So, I guess I would reiterate that the, to me, the question is not, are the levels hazardous or not?
Correct.
Um, again, the EPA doesn't monitor water. They don't monitor things that aren't dangerous to people. They monitor things that are dangerous to people because if they hit certain levels, it will cause, again, if there's a one in a million cancer risk, if it's higher, that gets higher and higher and higher. They don't monitor things. I didn't see water on here. I didn't see oxygen on here. I saw different chemicals that are offsets from things. But I don't see things that don't have any toxic effects on any of the lists, and it's not what's in the packet. It's looking at what was actually measured by Antea, who did the air study. There is a variety of different chemicals, and so, again, our land use code is not, again, we can change this, but that's a separate conversation. It's not looking at, well, does it meet the federal standards? That's a separate line. Do they meet the permit requirements? That is a separate requirement, and no one has challenged that requirement. Not one person has said anything about is Connell meeting their permit requirements. I haven't heard that one time anywhere in the comments, anywhere in any of the packet. The question is, is not, does it come at safe levels? Is, are these chemicals produced as any part of the process? And Connell's own study that they did on their plant shows that while those are, as Trustee Mason said, de minimis effects of it, those chemicals do exist as part of the plant's operation.
And I'm going to agree with this.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I agree. I don't, I don't think it comes down to levels. I believe it comes down to, is it toxic? And that brings me back to my placard. They put placards on toxic items.
So, I think the other thing too that, and I don't have the page, I would look through the script, but the Laramore County Health Department, when she came up, one of the things she should, did specifically say is that the effects of asphalt plants is an understudied area. And I can try to look through the transcript to find her actual words on that, but that was something that she said, is it's not an area that is well-studied. That was one of the comments that the Laramore County Health Director, or not Director, the representative from Laramore County Health did say in the video on the Planning Commission meeting was that there's, there's a lack of information about the effects of asphalt plants.
Thank you for that, Trustee Gator. Um, okay, so discussion for A. Are we good there as a board?
I'm gonna just circle back to one, one more thing here in the definition. I can, I completely agree with what you're saying regarding the uh, toxicity and it being labeled on, uh, you know, having the placards. Going back to what I said before about the finite interpretation of the code, there is one word in here that is very, it's very firm, and that word is shall. It's not may or might. It is shall. And as Trustee Gator has alluded, there is not a lot of room for gray area in that interpretation in my eyes. So, that's all I had to say.
Okay. Thank you. All right, with that, we will move on to item B. This is going to be the setback violation. I believe this is going to be the two the two hundred and fifty foot one, yes. Um, so, uh, let's start with Trustee Wigan.
I believe if it gets to the point where we agree that this would pass, I think this is pretty minute as far as how the whole operation's going to be running at that point. You know, if we need minor adjustments at that point, we can always put that in our final recommendation. So, I don't, I think this is probably one of the minor parts of it at the moment. Um, you know, it is heavy industrial, pretty much all of it. And, uh, I've been around enough heavy, heavy industrial sites in my lifetime, and you know, you try to make it as effective as you can. Uh, you want to keep it as, uh, how would you say it? Uh, less evasive to the immediate community. Like they said, they do have people up here. I mean, I don't think they're doing this if it were to pass to destroy our community. I think, uh, they're going to be doing everything that they could do to make it the most efficient, the most, uh, how would you say it? Uh, the least detrimental to the community. So, I have no problem with that particular.
Thank you. Okay. Mayor Proten?
Um, this is a discussion regarding the accessory buildings.
Yeah, this would be, uh, I think this is going to be referring to the bulk storage. Um, is that, am I correct in that? The two hundred and fifty foot setback?
It's the truck wash, the storage, the.
Yeah, bulk storage truck, the truck wash is no longer going to happen, and then the.
Yeah.
Got it. Okay, so, um, Connell meant, I would agree with Connell's statement and argument in this situation that regarding the setback, we want to look at the, the, the primary structure. All of those other elements are accessory structures and are not permanent pictures. So, this is, this is not a.
Okay. I'll just go, so we just stay in order. Um, yeah, once again, not a big concern to me. Um, seems like if this were to go through, they'd be willing to move those items if we so wished. So, it's kind of a lone void in my opinion. Uh, Trustee Mason?
Yeah, I would, I would say the same thing in regard to the second, third, and fourth setback violations. Uh, Connell's already shown that they can easily move those out buil- buildings if, if that is the board's desire. Uh, so quite frankly, I, I think that's kind of a moot point.
Bailey?
Uh, there's a couple of items here. One, talking about, uh, certain buildings complying to different zoning than the rest of the, the property. Um, so that I don't, in my understanding of zoning, that's not applicable. The entire lot is zoned industrial, so it is all industrial. Any other use on that property would be considered accessory to the pr- principal use of that property, which is the plant. Um, I guess I do have a question from our land use perspective, because as I review those references, of course, um, is the setback um, for this use applicable to accessory buildings? So, that's my first question. My second one would be, if that is not the case, uh, for example, in residential lots, right, you have a specific setback for your principal building. But then garages or other accessory uses have smaller setbacks. So, is that something that's applicable in, um, in, uh, industrial zone? Um, from what I can tell in the land use code, it talks about building setbacks, um, and heights, right, which we already talked about. There was a, a variance there. So, building setbacks meaning front twenty-five feet, side twenty feet, rear ten feet. Or any buildings on industrial lots, for, for what I see in the land use code. So, I guess my question would be to, uh, staff or otherwise, is if accessory uses on um, that property are, are, um, contingent on the, the setback, the eight hundred or twenty-six forty, whatever we determine, if those also apply to accessory uses? Because that would just answer the question there.
Uh, I, where possible, I'd like to direct questions to the, to the applicants and the appellants and their argument.
Mayor, Council, Carolyn White, again. Um, in response to your question, the way we certainly view it is, as, is as you described, which is that um, the setbacks that apply are those which are in the heavy industrial district for those types of structures. And those are accessory and ancillary structures, so twenty-five feet, you know, whatever. And most of what we're talking about here wouldn't actually be considered a structure, and then it has four walls, a roof, and a foundation. We're talking about things like piles of aggregate, um, fueling station, whatever. There's two main structures, the office and the shop, and both of those would need all those setbacks.
Thank you. Uh, I think, but the question of light industrial use, oh, sorry, go ahead.
All right. Well, to answer your question, I mean, I don't think that, um, we can have it both ways. We were, if the, if the eight hundred foot setback applies, um, and we're going to consider a whole use and industrial use, then we've got a real problem. Because a whole bunch of the site is within the eight hundred, um, foot setback. So, that's why, in my view, um, you know, it makes sense to kind of parcel out the heaviest, the heavy industrial use and then the light industrial use and have both setbacks apply. Uh, because otherwise, it, there would be a really strange outcome, because we'd have, you know, and we'd have this, this default is a thousand square foot, or a thousand foot setback. And that would, you know, eliminate most of the site, even cut down to eight hundred feet. That eliminates most all of the site from being usable for the principal use. So, I think the code necessarily builds in a principal and maybe a, you know, the, the most, um, intense, heavy industrial use, and then there's, and then there's a, a lighter industrial use, and so on. That's why, in my view, that light industrial definitely applies, that light industrial setback definitely applies, because the alternative doesn't make any sense at all. I mean, the, the whole site would be, and would be considered industrial, and then, you know, most of the, most everything except for like the work, the most intense uses within the setback. So, that doesn't make sense. Does that, does that help?
Yeah, it does. Um.
Thank you.
Yeah, there's a couple of pieces there just as, I guess, to challenge that or to question too, is, again, we don't have light industrial within industrial. It is all zoned as ones. If it was separated out or parceled, then which one was light industrial and one was industrial, I think those setbacks would apply. I guess that's my question, but, but the question of whether or not those accessory uses or whether or not they're even defined as accessory uses if they're as described, I, I think that that is definitely something that's debatable and not necessarily as an error. I think I would definitely say that there is question there that would have been, you know, in that category rather than as a clear error. So, that's, uh, still questions out there, but I think those questions are valid, so indication of that.
Thank you. Trustee Gator?
So, I would agree with a lot of what, uh, Trustee Daly said, that I think that there is a lot of if and or. Um, I know as the applicant, the applicant stated in their, um, kind of defense of that is the whole site is industrial, which then to me lends to, well, technically, then the whole site is subject to the thousand foot setback. And I know that there was stated in the applicant that part of the Board of Adjustments' response was that they could do accessory uses within the eight hundred feet. We were not provided the Board of Adjustments in our, part of our packet. That wasn't something the Planning Commission considered. They didn't look at the Board of Adjust. So, that, I have no data to back that up other than someone said it. So, I, I didn't watch the Board of Adjustments meeting. I don't know. And that really can't be considered, because all we have is one person said this is what was allowed. So, I don't know what the thought process was behind the Board of Adjustments, and I don't know if they considered, well, for the other uses that are more ancillary, what setbacks apply to those, because it does lead to the question of, okay, well, then what setback do we use? Because if we're not using the heavier eight hundred foot setback, are we using a lighter industrial? Are we using a commercial? Is there no setback? And you can just put something on the, like, that obviously doesn't make sense. And as I think there is confusion on that, so I don't feel that that is clear. So, I would agree with Trustee Daly. I wouldn't see that as a clear error. Because I can't even tell which one should apply in this case. So, in that case, I would not say it's a clear error. Uh, Connell has said they're willing to move those back, and if they're willing to do that, I think that's great to address the concerns of the appellants, but I don't, I think in that one, that was clearly debatable, because it's not clear which setback should be applied. And I think the information that would have helped to clarify that would have been what the, what, if anything, the, um, Board of Adjustments was considering on that. But again, that was not part of the information provided, so we can't consider that. So, that's my thought on that one.
Trustee Teets?
I will agree with, um, trustee Daly and trustee Gator. And I will also mirror what trustee Mason said in regards to B and C. And C talks about the contractor, contractor storage. So, but um, I do support the Conell resources and their argument that how we look at this is we don't, we don't split the parcel into industrial verse, um, light industrial. I know that that was done as pointed out in this image, but I think it was more to demonstrate what uses are going to be light compared to what are going to be heavy. Um, my question comes in on more of a, like you said, the 800 verse 1000. So that it's debatable.
Thank you. All right. Is that the final comments for B from everybody? Okay. Next one is going to be C, which is going to be the hundred foot setback for the quote unquote lean to, right? Welding mechanical garages. Start with trustee Gator.
Second here, let me.
Yeah, take your time.
Trying to find the right page here. Anyone else is ready? I'm waiting for my computer to scroll through the 2000 pages.
Let's start with the trustee Daly.
I feel like this is falling under this similar discussion that we just had. And maybe I was mixing up. You can see, you can see her. Is that what we're talking about?
I mean, it, they fall within the same realm.
Yeah. In my mind, I have grouped these based off of accessory. What are setbacks apply to those versus others? I'm not quite sure.
So your prior comments apply?
Yeah, I, I think it's the same scenario in my mind.
Okay. Trustee Mason?
I, I'd say the same thing I said before, uh, Conell's already proven that they can move these buildings to be within the setback requirements. So yeah, again, for these, I, I don't think there's any question here.
Yeah, I mean, it's my question, debatable. Mayor Pro Ten?
I will echo my constituents on their perspective on this item. As it's an accessory.
Thank you. Trustee Wigan?
I would say this is debatable. So again, goes back to where we were at in the last.
Trustee Teets? I did. Oh, back to trustee Gator.
Almost there. Okay. So I think the only thing, and again, I, I don't know if this one's as debatable that I agree with trustee Mason, they've said they're willing to move it. Cause I think this deals more with a specific use and the one that was cited was initially the car wash and, or the truck wash. And I know that there was comments made, it was being removed, but it was still on the site plan. So, and I couldn't find. Maybe there was somewhere in the site plan that was said, this is being removed. I saw it in the letter from Conell that they were removing the truck wash. It was said in the planning commission meeting, but in the actual site plan, it was still on the site plan. So I was a little unclear as to whether or not and then what was stated. Um, so that one, the reason I say that would be different and debatable, I would just say I would like Conell to meet that hundred foot setback. That, that's simple. I think that's fixable, but where the other one, I think it was debatable. So I wouldn't say that the planning commission erred. In this one, I think that they're just say adjust, the air is just adjusted to make sure it meets that specific uses to make sure they hit the hundred foot setback. If that's there. So, but it would be what use it is because it changed from one use to another use and that's where the confusion comes.
Okay, perfect. Anything further on that one from any of the trustees? Okay. Um, next is going to be item D. This is going to be the setback for the aggregate loading bins, um, aggregate storage bins. And I believe the conveyor belt. Is that correct? Uh, for section D, you guys are also referring to the conveyor belt setup going to the mixing plant itself? Thank you. Perfect. Um, does anybody at the board want to refresh on what is in this region? No. Okay. Let's start with trustee Teets.
So this one I did support the finding. Um, and my main question revolved around, and maybe one of our trustees or Dan could answer this for us. So lot line measurements. Where does that lot line measurement actually fall? So when I looked at it, trying to decide in previous discussions that we've had in other things we've listened to. The lot line is measured from the impact area out or the lot line is measured at the actual lot?
The, it's measured from the actual heavy use.
There, so the lot line is like a, is the property line. Are you talking about?
But you're talking.
Back distance, like where those points begin and end?
So you're, the setback distance is where is that measured from is what you're referring to?
Correct.
Okay. And, uh, Mr. Sackdanza, correct me if I'm wrong. That measurement is from the actual heavy use item, which in this point would be the mixing plant to what was given a variance.
It's from the use to the protected district lot line. So you go from, and this is part, this is part of the discussion that the planning commission, I believe it was cited and I was just looking. Please, it was cited in one of the slides on one of the parties, but when you're measuring a setback distance, it's from the, and the example used in the planning commission, which was, I thought was referencing one of these slides was an example of marijuana. Is it's from the building to the lot line of protected use. So in this case, it's, um, from the heavy industrial use to, from there out.
Can you, can you expand on that a little further? So then is it a corner of the building or the center of the building? I mean, cause if we have a large facility, that could be.
It'd be the corner. I mean, it'd be the outside of the building. It's not going to the center of the building.
So you would find the corner of the building closest.
Yes.
Draw a straight line from there.
Take your string and then you, does it exceed the closest property or lot line for the restriction that we're measuring for?
That's how, that, that would be how a setback is.
Okay.
That was what was explained at the plank, which is exactly what you stated. The outer edge of the building was where the measurement would start.
Thank you for the clarification.
Is that?
Good question, trustee.
That does answer my question. So, um, without having those exact measurements, I would have to support that finding. That's and I think the measurement is in here. I just need to locate it in the.
So my question is what finding are you supporting?
So the, when you look at it, 800 feet of the western property line, aggregate loading bins. Are they within that exception? So in the mapping, where it's located, what we can see at this time, to my understanding, it does not meet that setback requirement. From looking at what was submitted to us and their plans.
So.
Yeah, I, well, I'm trying to.
No, okay, we can come back. We'll circle, circle back.
Please do, because it's.
We'll go, we'll go to trustee Gator now.
Okay. Um, so I think for this one, um, I would find that that is within the 800 feet. And I know it does get tricky as to, okay, where is the heavy use? Where does it start? Where does it end? Kind of with the marijuana use, right? They don't have marijuana plants on the outside wall of the building, but yet that's where we measure from. These are the pieces that are connected to the heavy use, right? The heavy use does not happen without the storage bins and things like that. Now that being said, I think Conell has said that they're willing to move those if they have to, to apply by that. So I would say that yes, there was an error. It's within the 800 feet. That wasn't debated. What was debated is are these really the heavy use? Um, and I think if we're going to be consistent in saying the heavy use is the outside of a marijuana building. Uh, again, this is what was presented to the planning commission, so not bringing new things into that. Well, then the outside of the piece that is dealing with the heavy use, even if that's, yes, the emissions aren't coming from the loading bin, right? They're coming from the, the dryer stack. But I think that we need to, so I would say on this, I would say there's an error, but I think that can be addressed by, um, putting a condition that they, again, if we find it on everything else, I would say this one should have a condition to say that those are moved to be, um, outside of that 800 feet and meet that setback.
Thank you. Trustee Daly?
I think this is another example of it's debatable as to whether that portion would or would not be considered part of the principal use. So I understand why this is something that we're not quite sure about or, but if it's been offered to change and it would be considered part of the principal use, then I agree it should be outside the 800 feet as defined. So, um, again, I don't think this is an error necessarily. I think it was interpretation of what was considered the principal use of the property. So I, I also see how, I don't think this was, and then like in a way of deceiving that process. I think it was just interpretation debatable of what's part of the principal use.
Thank you. Trustee Mason?
Yeah, same thing I said before. Con, Conell's already said the location and temp, of the temporary and movable objects such as the stockpiles, aggregate, aggregate bins, conveyor belts must comply with the 800 foot variance. All we have to do is make that a condition of approval and that would satisfy that.
Yeah, I'm same thing. Mayor Pro Ten?
Well said, trustee Mason.
Yeah, I think they already addressed that Conell did in the presentation as far as moving as much operation to the furthest northeast corner possible to offset any of those problems. So, and again, I think that's debatable.
Debatable. Are you prepared trustee Teets? We got time.
What's the electronic page? Can you see it? I might be able to blow it up for you.
Did it say 686?
No, 65.
I've got 66 up.
This is from the planning commission packet. All right. Yep. So if you start on page 66, 67.
Yeah.
Yes. Oh, yes. So, but it's also labeled in here. So, but that is correct. So if you look at page 13 of the packet that, um, the appealance packet, it's listed there.
Presentation.
Presentation.
Page, page 13 of the presentation from the fellow.
Uh, page seven, slide 30.
Yeah, I can't follow it.
Can you speak into the, cause you're having a discussion on this. We need to speak into the, uh, mic for the record.
If they are going to move it, so from the diagram that was submitted, if they do plan on moving it, then I would feel it is a non-issue as long as it's moved and upheld.
So you would, you, so you would fall in line with, with B and C in that regard? Thank you. All right. Then the next item we are going to be discussing is the air dispersion, right? So, um, let's talk about the emissions from the plant, what the code or how to interpret the code per se. And we'll start with mayor pro ten. Okay, we'll start with trustee Gator.
I was just going to say as the, uh, the appellant, uh, made clear, they didn't bring that up today. As a, I know it was in the initial letter, but he did not bring that up today. Um, and I think there was some question, they actually might agree with the applicant. So for that one, I would say the planning commission is fine on that one. That's just kind of my stance, especially that the appellant chose not to reiterate that in their presentation to us today. That I would say would be good with staying with planning commissioned on that. Yeah, we can ask them to clarify.
Yeah, this issue was in the initial like notice of appeal. Um, I didn't go into it today and not necessarily saying that we agree with everything, but, um, we're just not pursuing that issue. So I don't think that you all need to get into that issue.
Thank you. Does anybody on the board feel like we need to get into that issue?
I just say code is code and code specifically states that it needs to be combined to the site. I support that finding.
You support the applicant's point or the app? Yeah, perfect. Okay. Anybody else have anything to say there? No. Okay. Let's move on to F. Give me a second here. So this is going to be, um, site drawings, dimensioned elevation, um, concerns. And start with yeah, trustee Daly, let's do it.
I forgot my name for a second.
I, I, no.
Okay. I understand that was, there wasn't a full blown, um, engineered elevation provided for that specific, that building in question. But what I did see was a diagram of the building, examples of finishes. And I have to go back to that, that specific page, but I did see. But I did see, um, indication of what to expect for that building. Uh, it wasn't like it was completely absent. I think maybe it wasn't as detailed as hoped for. And I have seen that is not necessarily like a typical process within the planning process, but if it's a standard basic steel building, the components that are in question are generally the finishes, outdoor finishes. If we'll have stone here, what will the materials be? Um, otherwise it's a pretty standard type building. So I saw all those items that were provided, um, and available. I just don't think that they were maybe up to the detailed level as expected. Perhaps by another group, so I could see why this would be debatable. Um, but I did see some effort put forth for, uh, building design in general. So I think the elevations were provided, but just maybe not at the, the level of details as hoped for by both party, or the other party, so.
Okay.
I can see how this could be debatable. I don't think it was an error, it was an absent.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Mason.
Yeah, I, I don't think that planning commission was an error on this. The fact is they gave them direction for the final dimensioned elevations to be deferred until the submittal of the building permit. So as long as the planning commission gave them direction, I believe that, uh, Connell's within compliance.
To stay in order here, yeah. I believe it's debatable. Um, staff is allowed to make changes like that sort of recommendations in that area, waive things for those as stated by the, um, well, stated by Connell, um, in their presentation to us and also in our code itself. There's, yeah, I mean, I don't think they were maybe completely what the appellant was looking for, but they're there, there's understanding of what's going to be there. So I don't think it was a, an error, I think it's debatable. Rep. Ten.
My interpretation of this item is that the, uh, planning director deemed the application complete enough to submit the, uh, application to the planning commission. Uh, the intent of the elevations is to show the height and the visual, uh, representation, the amount of detail, um, required for that, I think is, is debatable. Um, so I would deem that this item is debatable.
Thank you. Trustee Wig.
Yes, I agree it's debatable. I agree with, uh, what trustee Mason and, uh, trustee Ashkin said, so, I, pro, mayor pro ten, sorry about that. But, uh, yeah, I think that's debatable.
Thank you. Trustee Teets.
So, and this is one area where I am going to disagree. Um, only mainly because of the fact that in dial, delving into annexation discussions last night, um, part of the application process with, for the application not to be returned back to the applicant, site plans are required. Where you expect things to be, what the dimensional items are. It says here that no, no site plans where the buildings were going to be were actually submitted. It didn't say a building. It says that the site plan was not complete. So, and at the end of the day, during those applications, that's your checklist. When you're going down in the land use code, it will literally list what you have to submit when you submit an application and site plan or plot plan is one of those requirements. Um, I'm not going to say that's debatable. The other thing I will say is it was noted here in page thirty-two, um, from Connell's PowerPoint. Um, that the, these structures are in a preliminary phase of design and elevations of these structures are not developed. So that.
Yeah, and they said it'd be phase two, right?
Yeah, so, but at the end of the day, the site plan was submitted for approval for the entire site, which means that that application is in fact incomplete. So, and that's just going off of land use code and following the rules. Um, so that one unfortunately, or fortunately, I'm going to have to argue and say that that was, in my opinion, an error that was, did happen.
Thank you. Trustee Gator. Alright, so I just want to read the equip, appropriate section of the land use code, because I, I believe this one's very black and white. There should have been no question on this. And I say this because one of the planning commissioners actually brought this very specific issue up. So it was very concerning to me that this wasn't addressed at the planning commission level. Um, so this is section fifteen five ninety, site plan and building design. Um, section B, commercial and industrial architecture. Elevation and site plans, dimensioned elevation drawings or renderings, including front, back and side elevations shall be submitted with all site plan applications to illustrate conformance with the regulations herein. Elevations shall indicate materials to be installed on all building surfaces. Um, so they did provide the materials, they provided some rough drawings, but the elevations were not provided. Um, so, and again, it doesn't say with some, it doesn't say with permitting process. It says all shall with the site plan application. There, there's, there's not gray, there, there's not, to me, there's no question in that, that, that's pretty simple. And again, this was brought up by one of the planning commissioners and it was kind of explained away, I felt. But this, uh, again, maybe it's something, it's an internal process that we need to work on. But this is, the, the, me, there's no, there's no gray there. That, that's very clear and that wasn't presented. And so the site plan isn't complete without those according to our own code. Now, if staff feels that the code should be different, well, then again, there is an appropriate process to come back and change the code. But that's not what we're here to do, that's outside of our scope tonight to do that. So, um, I do feel very clearly that there was, the planning commission did err in approving that without those elevations, because the code's very black and white on that. Thank you. Okay, so that's all, all the items, that's A, B, C, D and F. Is there anything further the board wants to discuss on these items or any questions for the parties that are here? Let me know, I'm not going to call on you.
But this is pretty much for all tips or anything?
This is going to be anything related to what we are deciding tonight, which is going to be A, B, C, D and F.
I would be curious if either one would like to comment on the deliberation we just had regarding item that. My, my question is, is.
I mean, if we have a specific question for them, okay. I don't want to just open up like whatever you want to say.
I want to use, um, the, ask a very clear question and I want to make sure I phrase it correctly, um, because words matter and words are important as we've discussed tonight with shall. During the application process, was, was there an indication from the planning commission or the planning director that there was, um, the ability to deviate from not providing those specific dimension requirements on uh, the elevations?
Or do you think that you did meet the requirements? I guess that's another.
Do you think that you did meet the requirements? Yeah.
I think it's crystal clear they did not meet the requirements. I mean, there has to be front, back, left, right of every single building. That's not debatable. And in the Connell's presentation, I don't think they fight that. They said, well, they, we told, we were told that we could do a phase two. Um, so, I mean, I don't think, I don't think Connell was even debating that they did not comply with this clear requirement. Um, so that in my mind, it makes this pretty clear. The, the, um, the requirements were not met and there's a reason for the requirements to, there's a reason why. I mean, I think I said this in my presentation, it's not just to check the box, okay, you put in your, your elevations. Like, staff is supposed to check the elevations and make sure they would comply with the actual substantive requirements. So that was just skipped over and I think that's pretty concerning that the, that staff and the planning commission would just allow that to happen. That's giving Connell a pass on the clear requirements of the code and that's a clear error.
Thank you.
Thank you, mayor trustees, Carolyn White again. This will be a two-parter again, because John actually, uh, handled the application process and was part of those conversations with the planning director. But, uh, in terms of what our position was that we articulated a moment ago, what I would like to say is that, um, what was submitted was intended to be meeting the intent of that requirement to the best of our ability, given the information that's available at the time. And based on our understanding from conversations with the planning director, that was deemed to be sufficient by the planning director, given those circumstances. And the reason why I think that's acceptable, notwithstanding that you read, um, trustee Gator, the exact words of the, the particular code requirement. I've been sitting here trying to find the exact citation in your code, but there is authority in the code for the planning director to interpret and determine what's required. And, um, certainly in my experience, when you have the pre-app meeting, you go through the list of all the checklist and sometimes the things that are on your checklist are just not applicable to a given situation. And the planning director directs the applicant not to submit one or more of those items. And so, um, maybe there are some things that need to be cleared up in the code, but certainly that's how it operates in practice. And I think our understanding was what was submitted was sufficient and that we were directed that it was not only possible, but advisable to save the complete, more detailed elevation submittal for later, for the reasons that, um, Mr. Warren's going to explain.
Thank you.
Correct, thank you. Um, I, I, again, I, I want to be careful here because I think the, the town of Wellington staff has been great to work with and they've been very professional. But this was at their direction of this is sufficient. It was brought up, um, at the planning commission hearing. And again, the planning director actually explained his position and that was deemed accessible, so, acceptable. So there was a clear debate on whether it was acceptable or not. And, and as the applicant, we, we do rely on staff to direct us and guide us through this process. And that's what happened here and we did what was requested at this point and what was allowed. And therefore, we feel we met the intent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, based off of that information. Yeah, I believe that trustee Gator brought up some, some good points, but, um, I'm, I'm going to stand with my position that this was um, debatable, that the applicant did their best to fit the elevations, um, to the best of their ability with the knowledge that they had presently available. Um, I would agree that I, um, have read somewhere within the code that the planning director does have that discretion. I mean, in this circumstance, I believe that that is, um, appropriate. So I, I hold my position that, um, this particular item is debatable.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we made it all the way around, right? Okay. Any, any, anything else?
I, I do want to come back to A, because I think it's very important that we determine the heavy use and producing of, and curating of toxic chemicals piece. If a vehicle drives onto a heavy industrial site for any reason and emits NOX, what do we consider that as the board? Would that be toxic chemicals?
I think that would be a choice of the person driving onto the thing. I don't think that's really what's at the core of this debate. And any trustee can correct me if I'm wrong. What's at the core of the debate is what was approved was not something that, well, I'll just say this, I don't feel it was true. I, after the record I've seen and at the end of the day, when you look at it, yes, toxic chemicals are going to be produced here. It's benzene and formaldehyde. There is a lot of chemicals that can be produced from these kind of plants. So at the end of the day, what I think and what I feel is that the two thousand six hundred forty feet should stand. That's, at the end of the day, that is what I feel.
So I'd like to add my two cents, because I would agree with trustee Mason. I don't think that those chemicals are no longer toxic because they're coming from a car. I think they're still toxic, whether they're coming from a car, a burger restaurant. But I do want to just read again what the code says. Any industrial and manufacturing heavy use, producing and curating toxic chemicals or conducting animal slaughtering shall be located at least. And then it goes into two thousand six hundred forty feet. It's not dealing with vehicles coming on site, it's not dealing with some, it's like, is their use producing these chemicals? That's the question. And I think that, again, from the studies that are in there, even Connell's own air study, yes, the, they're saying they're not at levels that they're de minimis, right? It's the one in a million chance of getting cancer. Our code does not ask what level it's at. Our code asks, is it there from the use? Not from the vehicles driving, not from that, from the use. And I think it's pretty clear that the fact that they have to have permits to control those, you have permits because a use causes something. They don't permit something that your use doesn't create.
The reason, and I, I don't, I've seen, this is the thing, is the reason why I couldn't say one or the other, yes or no, is because I think it is debatable. And I think that's the question here. Two things are debatable in my mind. The first one, what is the intention of the code? Produ- uh, producing and curating, to me, that sounds like this is a plant that creates chlorine or something like their, their goal and purpose is to make a toxic chemical. So that's, that's my question, how do you interpret that? What does the code intend on doing? I think that's debatable. The second part of it is whether or not those are toxic in that maybe they are the chemicals that could be deemed toxic if they were at a certain level. But the point is I've seen evidence from both directions at this point. Um, and they're probably in defense, I've seen overwhelmingly more sources from Connell's perspective um, in defense of that. I, probably because they're coming from the position of a defense from that. But there's many government organizations that they've referenced, all those kind of things. So there's, there's two pieces here, I think, that are debatable and have been talked through and that we've obviously proven are debatable, because we can't agree even among ourselves. What was the intention of that code? What does it, what was it supposed to mean? What are we supposed to be protecting ourselves against? And, and suffering ourselves from? And does, do those chemicals in those levels even apply as toxic? So this is why I can't in good conscience say that the planning commission made this decision out of error on this topic. I think it was, and from what I've seen of the deliberation and the comments that occurred, a very heavily debated topic. So, I mean, uh, I think the whole point that we're going back and forth on it proves that it's debatable. So those are the kind of things that I'm concerned about. I don't see a specific error that was occurred that said one or the other. I see evidence on both directions. So that's why I'm having a hard time determining, I, I can't say it's an error. That's why I think it's debatable.
Yeah, I mean, that's same thing that keeps crossing my mind, right, is they're producing asphalt, which is not toxic. It has emissions that at certain levels could be toxic, but are regulated. So are we talking about the product they produce? Or are we talking about the emissions that are produced? It's debatable, right? We don't, it's not clear. So I, yeah. I think you had some very good points there, trustee Daley. Okay. Final ask. Anything else from any of the board members?
Yes, so I'll go back to the debatable versus non-debatable. We're not debating, we're, at the end of the day, when you look at it, the debate doesn't come down to if it's dangerous, not dangerous. There, as, there is a list that has been released of toxic chemicals that can be produced from these facilities. The debatable at the end of the day is if you feel that those are toxic enough at certain levels. The, the finding at the, the, kind of the qualification of it all is shall, as it was pointed out before, if they are going to produce toxic chemicals, it shall be deemed that it should be twenty-six forty.
Debatable is.
Debatable is they aren't directly producing a toxic chemical.
Or, okay.
So that, that in and of itself is debatable, correct?
I would say that's part of the process. And again, and they're not in the code, I believe I'm correct on this, they're not talking about part of the pro, I mean, not the actual product that they're making, but if there's anything that is producing toxins. And whether it's at a high level or a low level, there's no differentiation on that. And also too, you're saying, you know, one in a million chance of getting cancer. What if you're that one in a million? Does make a difference. And, uh, you know, so these things do need to be taken in re- respect on that. So.
Yeah.
I would like to, I've been trying not to interject with discussion of our land use code. You know, the focus has been on the section of this defining the setbacks for heavy industrial and the producing and curating. One piece that's not been discussed and wasn't directly asked, but I think board needs to be aware of this portion of our code is that there's a definition section that includes definitions of industrial and manufacturing heavy. That definition, I have to scroll to it. Industrial and manufacturing heavy includes manufacturing of paper, chemicals, plastics, rubber, cosmetics, drugs, and it's a, it's a, it's a long list. When you're looking at the code, you have to in interpretation of, of laws, you, you have to understand that pieces are put in there for a reason. The definition of industrial and manufacturing heavy includes a lot of things and it would be hard to say that if any of these wouldn't emit some chemical. So there is, there's then setbacks for industrial and manufacturing heavy. And then there's a separate setback for industrial and manufacturing heavy that produces and curates toxic chemicals. So I think as you're thinking about this, there are two separate setbacks. So if the, if the definition of produces and curates toxic chemicals would be any emission of any toxic chemical, then that would eat the setback for 1,000 feet likely because the other industrial and manufacturing heavy items would all actually be the second definition. Does that make sense? The, the, the larger is intended to be a subset of industrial and manufacturing heavy. So the, the question is, is this the first industrial and manufacturing heavy and the code specifically calls out asphalt plants are definitely industrial and manufacturing heavy uses. There's no question. The question is whether an asphalt plant is in the second category as well. So, so that's there is that separate definition. It hasn't been discussed. I just wanted to, to bring that up.
Let me just read that definition. So industrial and manufacturing heavy. Manufacturing of paper, chemicals, plastics, rubber, cosmetics, drugs, non-metallic mineral products such as concrete and concrete products, glass, primary metals, acetylene, cement, lime, gypsum or plaster of Paris, chlorine, corrosive acid or fertilizer, insecticides, disinfectants, poisons, explosives, paint, lacquer, varnish, petroleum products, coal products, plastic and synthetic resins, electrical equipment, appliances, batteries and machinery. This group also includes asphalt mixing plants, concrete mixing plants, smelting, animal slaughtering, oil refining and magazine contained explosive facilities. So all of those things are all included in that definition of manufacturing heavy. And again, the question of are there toxic chemicals that are to me, a byproduct of the process that's happening? I think that's pretty clear. And it doesn't, there's not a separate thing for chemical manufacturers. So again, maybe there's clarity that needs to happen in the code, but to me, it's pretty clear.
Thank you, trustee Gator.
Mayor, it is nine thirty. Do we want to continue?
We don't call for continuation until 10 o'clock. No, it's 10 o'clock.
Sorry.
You're fine. Okay. Everybody satisfied with what we've gone over, what we've discussed? Okay. That moves us to the next, which is going to be a motion and a vote. Yes, Mr. Sapienza.
With a motion on, on an issue, on an issue like this, there are considerable findings. There's a number of factors there. I know we have been taking copious notes. And so perhaps we could an opportunity to call a brief recess while staff tries to coalesce those notes. We, we could potentially assist if the board would like to work on a motion. Otherwise, here we can help draft that. So whatever you'd like. There, there's been occasions like where we've kind of recessed to compile our notes.
I think the general consensus I heard, and you guys can tell me if you're right or not, but any of those concessions or considerate conditions that were offered by Connell to meet any setback requirements, any of those that were
B, C, D?
Yeah.
It's sound D should all be
Should all be included if, for any kind of considerations of approval. I heard everybody mentioned that those were, you know, regardless would be a nice to have and, and good conscience there. So I don't know if anybody disagrees with that, but all those conditions I think would be.
Everybody agreed on those with what I tallied.
Yeah.
Okay. So trustee Gator?
We're gonna do a
We are gonna do, yeah, five-minute recess.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, I call the August 23rd, 2033 special meeting Wellington. Town of Wellington Board of Trustees meeting back in session, time being 9:43 PM.
Mr. Mayor, I do apologize. After conferring with the notes of all three of us regarding this matter, we were not clear enough on the findings to write for, for a motion from that discussion. We felt that there was clear guidance from the board on items B, C and D, also E, possibly F. However, on A, we were unclear of the, we heard conflicting, conflicting a lot of conflict among the board. So we're, we're unable to draft a motion with those findings. So we, I, I hate to say that we need more clarity from the board on, on what it would like to do. And that may be the board needs to, if somebody, if a member of the board has a motion regarding that item, that might help. I mean, you can discuss that in your normal procedural way. And we'll hope, so, so I do apologize, but we couldn't do more there.
Okay.
Could maybe we go on items A through F and declare debatable or
Debatable or error? Yep, that's what we'll do. Start with trustee Gator. You want to go A through F with error or debatable?
Um, A is, I believe, an error. Hold on. Get back to that. B, I believe, is debatable. C, I believe, is an error, but that can be addressed by an adjustment. D, I also believe is an error, but can be addressed by adjustment. E, I find debatable. F, I find an error.
Thank you, trustee Gator. Uh, trustee Daly.
Although I realize that these subjects are incredibly personal and, and people feel very passionate about these topics. I cannot in good faith say that any of these decisions made by the planning commission were done in error. I think that they were all topics that were debatable. But I would like to recommend that we include the modifications on the setback items relating to any kind of accessory use, which was B, C. Remind me.
B, C, D.
B, C, D, I think. Let me make sure.
Yep. Yeah, go ahead.
So my proposed motion would be a modification on those items and then otherwise determining those other factors as debatable.
Thank you. Trustee Mason.
I would say that all are debatable with B, C and D being subjects to the conditions of approval that were set forth by Connell.
Thank you. We'll just go in order, so I'll go. I'm gonna say that they're all debatable with the conditions for, to be very clear, B, C and D.
Just clarify one thing. I don't believe if something's debatable, there's no conditions to change. Because if they didn't make an error, we shouldn't be changing it. We should only be changing if we believe there's an error. So
That is your, that, I mean, you can do what you want.
Okay, I'm just stating that.
Yeah. This whole thing's based off of opinion and argument, right? Mayor Proten. It is.
Let's carry on. Okay, I'm, I'm going to work from the bottom up here. On item F, the item I've determined to be debatable. Item E, no, D. Thank you so much. So D, debatable with, uh, accepting the modifications presented. Uh, let's see, D, debatable acceptance with the modifications.
Wait, what was E? Sorry, I'm sorry. I got, okay, they're the same. So, okay, I'll sum that up. B, C, D and E.
Debatable with modification. And item one, I believe that is an error.
Thank you.
You said a modification to item E?
She's, yeah, which there's not, there's
The one in the middle.
The, the one, B, C, D is
B, C, D.
Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Wigan.
Oh, keep it quick. I believe A is air. And every other one is debatable.
Thank you.
Do you want the modification?
If you were to move, if you were, yeah, in the mic.
Right, yes.
So, uh, you want to state which ones would be modified? Just for the record. So B, C and D, in your opinion, would be modified. Trustee Teets.
All right, A, I do feel was an error.
Okay.
B, C, D and E are debatable.
Okay.
F, I do find an error.
Sure. Okay. And then anything for modifications?
Um, I agree to the modifications proposed by Connell.
For
The B, C, D, and, yep.
Okay. Those town staff have what they need.
I would intend to make a motion. Um, and we can, you can help me create it with the proper findings of facts and I'll tell you what those would be. I would tend to make a motion to reverse the planning commission's decision based on item number one, finding that the proposed hot mix asphalt plant does produce and curate toxic chemicals and therefore does not fit the 2,640 foot setback. And I am taking that from the Antia report where it goes through and highlights the different chemicals that would be at different levels. And while those would be at safe levels according to permit, our land use code does not speak to the levels. It simply speaks to them being produced or curated. So if you need more findings of facts, but that's what I would propose to make a motion out. That.
I think you can make a motion. I think that finding facts would qualify. Um, you know, and in this regard, you don't really need to address
We all need to address
If the finding is that, that, that one was not met, then I think the decision of this board would be to reverse. So do you want to make that motion? I think
Do I need to repeat that?
I think you said opposite of what you intended. So probably repeat it, I think, would be a good idea.
I don't think it's a bad idea to repeat it.
Yeah, because he said it would not apply to the 2,640.
Okay.
When I think your intention
Let me make sure that I have it clear. So give me one second here. All right, so I'd like to make a motion. Page down. I'd like to make a motion that we reverse the decision by the planning commission to approve the site plan for Connell Resources. And the finding effect would be on the appellants. Um, item number one, let me get back to that so I can read what that was. All right, so the appellants, uh, first setback was that the asphalt plant is a heavy industrial use that will produce and curate toxic chemicals. That is governed by our land use code, chapter 15, section 430V two, where it says any industrial manufacturing heavy use, producing and curating toxic chemicals or conducting animal slaughtering shall be located at least 2,640 feet from any residential district, religious land use, medical care facility or school. I do find that the planning commission did err in not applying that setback. And the facts that I'm going off are from the chemicals that are listed out in the Antia report that starts on page 738 of the packet. Lowe's chemicals are listed out on page 745 of the digital packet as well. Um, it is very clear from the air study that these toxic chemicals produced and curated by the proposed hot, at hot mix asphalt plant. While these are proposed to be maintained at safe levels by permit, our land use code does not specify a clear level. So those are the findings of facts for my motion.
I will second that motion.
Perfect. Mr. Clerk, may I get a roll call, please? Trustee Gator?
Yes.
Mayor Donald?
Yes.
Trustee Wigan?
Yes.
Trustee Mason?
No.
Trustee Daly?
No.
Trustee Teets?
Yes.
Mayor Shosse?
No.
Clerk by Mayor Shosse, you say no?
No, yes, sir.
The motion fails with a vote of four against and three in favor. My apologies, my apologies. The motion carries with a vote of four, four, three against. And the decision of the planning commission is reversed with the stated findings of fact. Thank you.
No. So, no clapping, please.
All right. Now we're on to reports. Your reports from town attorney.
Not at the start.
Ms. Garcia.
No report, thank you.
Thank you. Town staff, communications, board reports, I mean, we had them last night. Perfect. Do I hear a motion to adjourn? So moved. Second. May I get a roll call, please? Trustee Gator?
Yes.
Mayor Proten McDonald?
Yes.
Trustee Daly?
Yes.
Trustee Mason?
Yes.
Trustee Teets?
Yes.
Trustee Wigan?
Yes.
Mayor Shosse?
Yes.
The motion carries. Mayor Shosse, if you would please adjourn the meeting? If you would please adjourn the meeting? Yeah, I now adjourn special meeting of the Wellington Board of Trustees, time being 9:55 PM.